We'll go ahead and call to order the Thursday, October 28th, 2021, meeting of the Clive City Council. Please call her all.
Mayor Sircena.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Well, nice to have everybody with us and thank you all for being with us in the chambers. Please stand and join me to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Approval.
Seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Okay, very good. Next item is citizens' presentation. Now, this is where anyone in the chambers can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do so, either in person or online?
For folks who are participating online, you can catch my attention using the chat function. Just chat at Pete Cook. Or you can use the raise hand function if you click on the participant tab and you're below the sort of video screen on your Zoom platform, you can click on that and you'll have the raise hand function for those participating by phone. To catch my attention, just go ahead and hit star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Mayor, I do not see any hands going up.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to our first official presentation. It's always a pleasure to have DART CEO Elizabeth Purshuti join us. Nice to have you here, Elizabeth, and Louis Montoya with joining as well alongside. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this evening.
Brave the rain and the traffic to get here.
It was a little harried. I can say that.
We get a bonus with Luis. I think the only yellow ones though.
Just use the mouse or the arrow keys.
Well, good evening and thank you again for the opportunity to provide you an update on everything that's going on at DART. But first, I want to thank Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Edwards for serving on the DART Commission. Councilman McCoy is our primary and Councilman Edwards is our alternate. They do a great job of representing.
Sometimes it's.
They do a great job of trading off and staying both equally involved and so just appreciate all the time and effort that they put into DART. We really appreciate their talents and all that they bring to the commission. So, at first, as you may recall, DART was actually formed 15 years ago this month in October. And since then, we've had a lot of changes. But probably one of the most significant is is the reconstitution of the DART governance in 2017, which allowed each one of our member communities' representation on the DART Commission. Since that time, the DART Commission, along with staff, have invested a considerable amount of time in evaluating DART services, operations, and even funding to ensure that we are maximizing the investment of our member communities. And as a result, over the last several years, we've implemented two cost-neutral service changes that provided both earlier and later service, along with more midday service throughout the network. We've also discontinued several underutilized services and have been able to reinvest those resources where there's been other transit needs in the network. We also introduced our first mobility-on-demand pilot, which eliminated an inefficient route in Urbandale and replaced it with our Flex Connect service, which allows riders within a zone to utilize Uber or Yellow Cab to get to and from DART bus stops. We've also diversified our fleet and so we've purchased several 30-foot vehicles where 40-foot and are using them on routes where it doesn't make sense to have a 40-foot bus. And then we've also approved a new funding formula to help better align our cost and benefit for member communities. And our work's not done. And so tonight, we want to talk to you or just remind you of all the services that you do have in Clive, some of the efforts we have as we look to plan for the future, as well as just an update on where we are with our funding formula and our implementation of that and as well as the discussion of our operations and maintenance facility. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Luis to talk about how we plan for the future.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and good evening, council members. I want to start off just with a really quick overview to orient you about the services that DART does provide here in Clive. I think one of the key things to keep in mind is that we really do try to tailor our services to the demand and the needs in the community. And to that end, we have a few different service types. We have local service, which is a bus that's going to stop more frequently, you know, more times of the day and really try to cater to those shorter trips. And we also have our express routes, which are tailored to longer trips, more commuting, in this case, the routes that go along Hickman and then along Northwest 86th Street and get on the freeway then and express into downtown Des Moines. We also have a paratransit and an on-call service that I'll touch on.
I'd have to say your express route on 86th is deadly on time.
Don't be late.
Don't be late.
That's right.
Can you imagine someone being late and then missing that bus and it's just bam, on the minute?
That's right. Our operators are trained to never be early, but.
Not everybody has Elizabeth's cell phone. To say what's next.
That's right. This is just a map and I'm happy to speak to it and answer any questions. But the general gist is that, you know, as you all know, Clive really lies, you know, nested in between, you know, many of our other communities. And the beauty of the DART system is that it's really regional in nature. And so while we don't have, you know, the Clive route, we have routes that really cross several jurisdictions, travel throughout our region, including go through Clive. And I mentioned the route on Hickman, East and West. There's a route 72 in, it really does a loop along University and loops down into West Des Moines as well. I'll talk about these in a little bit more detail as it relates to some changes that we're proposing. But again, happy to answer any questions about the existing service. Another service that we have, and this is a service that we actually recently expanded, is the Grimes On Call. So this is really focused on people who have either origins or destinations in Grimes, because it was a service that was already in existence that we built on, based on some feedback that we received about the growing needs for service in Grimes. And so the way this service works is you have to call a day ahead of time, but it will take you, as long as your trip starts or ends in Grimes, it goes to anywhere in that lighter purple area, which includes Clive. Part of the impetus for this project was some demand from Grimes to do field trips. So they have their summer programs. They want to do field trips. They wanted to visit your wonderful Aquatic Center here. And so now they're able to use this service and they book it just like any other DART customer. But in this case, we pull a big bus up because they're going to bring 50, 60 kids down to ride to the Aquatic Center. And that was started in July. It was really successful. I think they did it for four or five weeks consecutively and it was something that we'd like to build on. And so this is an example of a type of service that we really try to cater to the demand. The bus isn't up there all the time. It only goes when it's needed. In this case, they booked the field trips, you know, a week ahead of time. We know when to show up, where they're going, how many to expect. And so this is a type of service, the sort of tailored, where you want to go, when you want to get there, that we want to build on. And I'll get at some ideas about how we can use technology to do that. Ride share and paratransit are a little bit different. Paratransit, of course, is our service that's really for people who either through cognitive or physical disability are not able to ride the bus. And so we have a service that's a door-to-door service catered to them. We also do some contracted meal site trips where we help seniors, you know, especially seniors in like either dispersed settings or even congregate settings, get out and make sure that they're able to get out, have some mobility, have some access, and some socialization. Ride share is our van pool program. Actually, we serve, I forget what it is, it's a dozen or 18 counties around central Iowa. This is much more than even just the Des Moines region, but it really works on connecting employers with, or rather, employees to their job. And that's something that's been actually growing as of late, in particular in the manufacturing sector. If you think about how our workforce is getting increasingly squeezed, a lot of these employers that might be further away are really drawing on our region for labor. So now I want to get into a little bit of planning that we're doing for the future. I'm going to be very brief. I know you all have a lot on your agenda, but I just wanted to point you to an article that came out about a month ago in the Business Record. If you are interested, we spent quite a bit of time with the reporter and they did, I think, a pretty good job of breaking down the kind of whys and the whats and the whos of what I'm going to share with you. So I welcome you to find that as well if that's of interest to you. We started a long-range planning effort, really in early 2020, at the direction of the DART Commission. First and foremost, we wanted to make sure that we looked at our existing service and that we are doing the most with the resources that we have. Secondly, we want to look at the evolving needs of the region, in particular, the growth, how much we're growing, where we're growing, and how do we connect the growing regions? We also want to look at our service models, both the services that we use today, but also start to look at some innovative service models, in particular utilizing technology and even partnering with the private sector to provide transit services. And all of this, we want to bring together in a long-term vision for DART service. I mentioned we started that process in early 2020. Of course, as we all know, plans change. And 2020 was really busy with COVID response and recovery. We were able to pick up our process back up earlier this year where we did some public outreach. We asked not only DART riders, but really just members of our community at large, how's DART working for you? What can we do better? Where do you want to go? You know, when do you need to get there? A lot of those kind of fundamental questions about people's transportation needs. We also looked a lot at data. We looked at our own ridership data. We actually looked at general travel patterns, traffic. We looked at land use. We looked at the projections for how our region is expected to grow, housing, jobs. And we took those findings from our existing conditions analysis and the public feedback they received and have kind of boiled it down a little bit into the core needs that we're trying to meet with our plan. Firstly, we saw a need to better connect housing with jobs. As our region grows, distances can become great in people's commute. I think we've all seen it where the saying used to be like, you know, everywhere in this region was just a 20-minute drive away. Well, I can tell you, I just drove here from Ankeny. It's not 20 minutes away. And so. But so as those distances grow, you know, not only that, but the geography of how we spread out and that it becomes more difficult to serve by transit. You know, transit works best along straight lines, busy corridors. The more we spread out, the greater distance between locations, the harder that is to serve. Doesn't mean we can't do it. It just means that we want to be mindful. In particular, where low-wage jobs are and where people can afford to live. I think we see increasingly that we have low-wage jobs dispersed throughout our region, but a lot of the more affordable housing is more of our region's core. And so we want to think about how we can connect housing and jobs via transit. The other thing that came up a lot in our discussions, and I think is probably especially relevant here in Clive, is that people want to see more than just connections to Des Moines. The, not only is the locations of jobs shifting, less proportion of jobs are downtown, that was even before the pandemic. And of course, we're, you know, waiting to see kind of how that shift works long-term. But more and more people want to see, want to see transit go in between all of our member communities, not just back and forth to Des Moines and within those communities, because there's a lot of needs that aren't just even trips to work, although that's the primary reason people tell us they use DART. We also know that people are going to the grocery store, going to medical appointments. And especially as you think about how our population is aging, you want to think about how those folks can age in place and still have access to their essential needs and services. Weekend service is something we heard quite a bit about and was something that was actually even a little bit surprising to me is that there was a real open-mindedness to these flexible on-demand solutions. And I say it's a surprise to me because, you know, as somebody who's more technology proficient myself, of course, I think it's a great idea. But actually, we heard from a lot of low-income people and it wasn't even a study that we did. There was a study that United Way did about, because it's almost been two years now, but where they did some in-depth work with low-income populations, doing surveys and interviews. And they were the ones actually coming forward with, you know, we want to have these flexible solutions that go where you want to go, when you want to get there. And when you think about it, it makes a lot of sense because more and more destinations are spread out, especially jobs. And so this is something that we really wanted to lean into with our study. So our, in the summer, we came out with recommendations for our study that really respond to those needs that I just outlined. I'm not going to be able to go into all of them. I'll give you some examples, especially that are relevant here. But really, we focused on two things. We focused, like I said, on doing the most with what we have. So this slide here touches on our cost-neutral proposals. These are things that would take an existing service that is underperforming, has low ridership, retire that or transition it to either another type of service or just ask people to use another route that's existing, maybe extending it or rerouting it to meet their needs. Our goal here is to address some of those underperforming routes, which we did find in our study, and hopefully expand access either for those individuals using those routes or for new people who haven't found transit useful, but maybe could if we had routes that were a little different or maybe ideally were more flexible. And so some examples are here that I'll go over, but really, this is where we're kind of leaning into some of the technology. Sorry, I want to skip ahead one slide. I thought, yeah, this is an example of what I'm talking about. This is a proposal to retire a route, Route 72. I mentioned this is one of the routes that does surf Clive. Route 72 does a loop along University, connecting Valley West Mall, Jordan Creek Mall, and Valley Junction. This is a route that operates seven days a week. It has relatively low ridership. And actually, a lot of that ridership is concentrated along University Avenue. You can see, if you can squint, maybe see the map, the circles are the ridership. So our proposal is to retire Route 72 and repurpose those resources by creating an on-demand zone. So this would be using a DART vehicle and a DART driver that outfitted with technology similar to Uber or Lyft, where somebody can pull out their smartphone or call us if they don't have a smartphone and book a trip to go where they need to go, when they need to get there. So they would be able to see on their smartphone, how long would it be before that bus got to them? How long would it be till they got to their destination? What the cost would be, even pay for it, all on their smartphone or calling into DART if they wanted to. Also, part of this recommendation is to keep fixed route along University. Like I said, that's where it is being successful. And really, you know, fixed route, having a bus on a schedule that can fit more people is really the most efficient way to serve them as long as you have the demand. And so what we have is Route 3, which is an existing route. It's actually one of our highest ridership routes that comes from Des Moines along University. That route currently ends at Valley West Mall. Our proposal is to have that route go further along University so that people, maybe if their destination or their origins are in Des Moines or Windsor Heights, that they can stay on that route and go all the way west, even all the way down to Jordan Creek. So we think that would be a benefit for folks to have more access along University. And then everywhere else in that zone, which does include a portion of Clive as shown here, people would have that on-demand access, be able to book that ride to get where they need to go anywhere in the zone. And so this would be, this would be cost neutral. There's an upfront cost to purchase the technology, but in terms of the operating budget, it would basically be repurposing the vehicles that were currently using on that blue route shown to this new type of service. So in addition to that and other cost-neutral proposals, of course, we found, you know, through talking to folks in our region that the needs really outstrip what we can do in a cost-neutral manner. We wanted to make sure that our long-term vision reflected those needs. We call them, you know, potential future improvements. It's potential because we haven't identified funding. These are things that would require additional funding in order for us to pursue, but we wanted to reflect them as they were needs that we saw. These things range from running, you know, some of our bus routes that are the busiest, running them more often or running them more on weekends, to more, expanding more of these mobility-on-demand type of services. These were things, though, that we identified that weren't cost neutral. There's a whole list here. If you're interested, I would encourage you to go to our website or check out the article for more information. But I think the thing I'll point out is that we really have them broken out into two buckets. I have them listed here as modest enhancements with that price tag there. Those are things that we think we could do today. The demand is there. It's really just about coming up with the resources. And so if we were able to identify those resources, then we could pursue those. The things in the green box are longer-term enhancements. These are things that probably the demand isn't there today, but based on our analysis, we do think that demand will be there in the future. So addressing some of the growth areas of our region, addressing areas that we hear requests for service, but maybe they're not currently a DART member community. Don't call out your neighbors, but, you know, we wanted to reflect that we did hear a need for transit there and we'll describe it, but without necessarily, you know, there's not a commitment tied to any of this. I apologize. This was the other near term. I'm going out of order here. This is the other near-term slide that I should have shown to talk about, again, another cost-neutral proposal. I'll be brief. This one actually would use Uber or Yellow Cab. So this is something that we actually started in 2019 in Urbandale in a section of Des Moines, actually shown there in the darker rectangle on the east. So we would, this service works by somebody being able to go from anywhere in the zone to select bus stops. In this case, Urbandale City Hall or Valley West Mall. And the reason they would use Uber to get to those locations is because those are going to be transfer points. Those are going to be places where we build out a really good bus stop so that they can transfer from their Uber onto a DART vehicle. The goal here is to, again, take a bus route that isn't having a lot of ridership, actually has been declining, and for the same cost, we think we can serve a larger geography and hopefully more people by giving them that Uber or taxi cab access anywhere in that zone. In addition to service proposals, we also want to make sure that we're emphasizing the types of policies that are really supportive of transit, especially as we think about as our region continues to grow and develop, as much of that growth that we can focus on areas that we already have transit, that's going to be the most effective way for us, for DART to serve a transit need. We also want to think about complete streets. Of course, I know that you all and things that we've talked about, especially along University and investing in kind of the quality of the bus stops is important. But, you know, we always want to make sure that we remind, especially as we work with the private sector, that every bus trip really starts and ends with a walk. And so in cases where we can partner with private development, when there's something going on, if there's a bus stop there, I show an example here of something we did in Windsor Heights where we partnered with Walmart and we received a state grant to really build out a high-quality bus stop there. And so that was a partnership that we were able to do because they saw the value in increasing transit access and making a high-quality waiting area. And it was actually a beautification project as well. And really, all of this comes down to really providing opportunity, because, you know, we know that the number one reason that people ride DART is to get to work. We know that DART can be an affordable, reliable, and accessible way for, in particular, our lower-income residents to access jobs. And so we think that DART has a really strong role to play in that upward mobility of our region. And so this is just a map showing all of the recommendations kind of tied together, both those near term and longer term, and our vision of looking at those routes that are already doing well and where we can investing in them because they've been proven to do well, using those flexible options like on-demand to provide people the mobility that they need where it doesn't make sense to have a fixed route bus and tying it all together with seamless transfers, whether there are transfers on the street where there's enough space for us for, you know, a connection between an Uber and a bus or where there's maybe a bike parking or a bike share type of connection, but also technology connections so that people can plan their trips, no matter what mode that they're using, pay for their trips in order to have some choice in how they move about our region. Back to Elizabeth.
Well, quickly, just give you an update on our property tax formula changes. You'll remember back in February of this year, the Commission unanimously approved a new property tax formula. And the goals of that, the formula, were really to make sure that we are meeting the regional intent of DART, allowing for member communities to continue to find value in maintaining their membership, as well as providing flexibility for DART to meet future needs. And so you'll, we began the implementation of that with our FY, our current fiscal year budget. And that will be implemented over the next, the next eight years. And Clive did see in this current FY '22 budget, just over a three-cent reduction in their property tax or in your property tax rate. This slide shows the estimated kind of changes in property tax rates that will occur over that eight-year implementation period. In order for the city of Des Moines to fulfill their commitment, you'll see that they exceed the current ability to levy at the 95 cents per thousand. They are paying above and beyond separately from the levy to meet those commitments. But the Commission did feel that as they worked through the process that the formula is fair and reasonable, however, did recognize that there is a significant amount of disparity that is created through the formula between member communities levy rates for DART. And so one of the things that they have tasked us as staff with is really looking at alternative funding sources and how do we work to diversify funding for public transportation. And so last year at the legislature, we worked on a potential solution with, and that would be a 5% hotel motel tax that we could implement and then provide property, one-for-one property tax reduction through that. We were successful in getting it as part of the Senate's bill, getting it in the governor's compromise budget bill, but we weren't successful at the end of the day in moving it through the House. So we are planning to move that again forward this fiscal or this next legislative session. And what we estimate the property tax reduction would be across the region would be close to $10 million and thus providing between 20 and 50 cent reductions in our member community's property tax rate. So pretty significant. And so we're hopeful that we'll be able to be successful in that this next legislative session, which would then allow us to be able to put that to a vote of the people across the region in November of 2022. With, and if we're successful in that, then we'd begin being able to collect those revenues on January 1st of 2023 and then it'd be incorporated into the next year's fiscal year budget. So real opportunity for property tax reduction and so really hopeful that we'll be able to make that headway here in the next legislative session.
Elizabeth, I think that's an important point and it's a heavy lift, right? And I think everybody knows it's a very heavy lift and this isn't the first round that it's been, you know, something new's been tried. And as we know, to change legislation sometimes takes two, three, or four shots at this thing. I say that because in the meantime, it's a question of the municipalities that belong to DART. It's almost like the recycling question, right? Sorry to bring that in, but it's, do you want it or not, right? And I think everybody says they want DART. And so we got to be prepared. If the legislators don't change it, what do we do, right? And so I'm hopeful that it gets, the legislation gets changed. Something has to happen. And so it's either we push for this and we see these reductions or we all are at the table trying to figure out how to still fund it and fund it the right way, including maybe in the slide coming up, I'm not sure, but, you know, a new facility that's needed and other things. So just a warning of, either way, something's coming and it needs to happen if that's what we all choose is DART in the states, which I'm all for that.
You know, and, you know, with the hotel motel tax, that was the one thing that we found to be most favorable amongst our state-elected officials and to be supportive would be above and beyond what's currently collected. We'd still be competitive with our neighbors, our border neighbor states from, in large communities. So feel like it's, it's not, while any tax is impactful and not always appreciated, it does have kind of a minimal, minimal impact locally and has a real opportunity for property tax reduction. And so we're hopeful. My next.
Your Honor, on that, just a quick question.
Your honor, on that, just a quick question, Elizabeth. So with the pandemic, obviously hotel motel was one of those revenues locally that was the most impacted. If this were to go into implementation, as the commission, you talked about, maybe the need to have certain reserves in place because obviously that revenue is a very elastic revenue with hotel motel, at least has been our experience. So have you all talked about maybe property tax is one thing, then you're, is a little more of a stable revenue versus hotel motel?
Yeah, we we have talked about that we would potentially need to change our reserve requirements and have have a little bit more in that regard. And we did make some changes to our reserve policy this last year and added a stabilization fund that we've started funding as well.
Okay.
So. So one of the the other projects that that we have out there is our operations and maintenance facility. It's currently located just south of MLK and just west of Southwest Ninth behind the BP station. It's in the midst of the gray station development in the city of Des Moines. It is located in the flood plain and it's also has a lot of operation, operating constraints, which Councilman McCoy can can probably share with you if you're interested and and count them all off. But one of the things that as we've been working on, how best to to work out of that facility? And as we've talked with the Federal Transit Administration, they feel like it's a losing battle with that facility. And just given the fact that it's under, has been underwater and it takes on water whenever there's any sort of water event in in the area and just given the development around it, they're, they have significant concerns. And so we have been looking at alternatives for that over, for the facility. Over the last couple of years, we've identified a piece of property at Southeast Twenty-Fifth and Mari that could be a potential new location for the facility. We're in the process of completing environmental work. We are in the process of doing some archaeological surveys and resource surveys. There was a archaeological resource identified on the WRA property. You'll probably remember several years ago, and so there may be the potential that that extends. So we are waiting to see what the results of that are. We have commit, completed schematic design and are awaiting cost estimates. And then we've also are applying for a bus and bus facilities discretionary grant. We were awarded a grant for the facility back in 2019 of seventeen million dollars. We are anticipating that, we are hopeful that we would get an award of that same magnitude with this next round. And so the commission will be having a workshop on this later in December to discuss kind of next steps. And once we have the completion of some of this environmental work and our cost estimates, allowing them the opportunity to to simmer on that and then make the decisions as to how we move forward here in the future.
Good news, there's no bats yet, no Indiana bats or.
Oh, there is bats.
Nebraska ones or anything.
In some trees, so you only, but there's a few months that you can take the trees down that don't impact the bats.
Those bats are from New Jersey, is that?
So just in closing, you know, we have have had a lot of, even in the midst of the pandemic, have had a lot of new projects and initiatives underway in terms of marketing campaigns to bring people back to DART. The the smaller vehicle, thirty foot smaller vehicles that I mentioned earlier, deployed seven electric buses a year ago this month. And then we have our 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 art bus or our art shelter program and having some new art shelters out in the community here in the next, some more out later this year and then into the spring next year. And then we've also been focusing on partnerships. And we've had two new residential property partnerships, one with Newberry Living and one with Conlon Properties at the Deer Ridge Community. And so those have yielded not a lot of access for people who live in an affordable and low income housing and providing them new opportunities to move around the community. So appreciate their willingness to to partner with DART. And so just appreciate the time and and be happy to take any questions.
Elizabeth, thank you, council questions. Before we get into questions, Mike or John, anything you want to add? Is our representatives?
I would add that, you know, the years I've been on council, Clive has had many questions, right, of DART and have challenged DART in numerous ways, including myself, right? And Elizabeth and I talk about it a a lot. I would say that not just because of Clive, but they have really responded to all of those challenges that we've made as well as what the other cities have made. In that list that was read before, you know, I remember this council talking about the forty foot buses and can't we go smaller, right? And and the answer's here, the thirty foot and on call and the last mile and the outside the box innovative thinking of Uber and Lyft for that last piece. Also then DART doing some of their own. And so as they right the ship, the cost may not come down like you would think right away. I think you'll see that though, neutralized, but there's a lot of investments in technology and other things that have been put up, put to the dart board. And they're pretty cool things coming. I'm probably not as technically savvy as when I rode the bus a few times and I had to have staff show me how to, you know, get on the bus, where to do all the apps. I had a big map on my desk at that time and they said, it's all on your phone, you know? But they've really made those changes and responded to what we've asked along with the governance. I mean, these, these are big lifts that have been done in the last three to five years.
I very much agree with that. That's, I've been impressed with that over the last several years and and I think that's good for all of us. Susan, you had?
I do, I was really interested in the Grimes example, talking about the bus to the swimming pool. And I'd just like to hear a little bit more about how something like that gets initiated and considered in case there would be something similar for Clive.
Yeah, so we had had that Grimes on call in in place, but it only, in in serving all those communities, but it only operated one day a week. And so it wasn't overly useful. And so kind of the expansion that we made earlier this year was to make it five days a week and expand the hours to make it a little bit more useful to to the customer. But I guess if that's, if that's something that Clive is interested, now is the the time to have that discussion as we work to, you know, pull together that trend, our transit optimization plan and and move it forward. I guess the question would be is what what market are we trying to serve? And you know, what what are we trying to achieve? We will have the micro transit hopefully here on the the southern part of Clive. We could look at the boundaries of of that and whether it would require additional resources or not. But if there were specific areas that you're thinking, we'd love to hear them. Do you have anything you want to add?
I would just say that the the distance of the trips kind of plays into the the design of the of the of that service. Because those were longer distance trips versus what I would imagine a lot of the Clive needs could be shorter just because you are surrounded by more or amenities closer.
Very interesting. The only other question related to it is who identified that need in Grimes? Did you see it? Was it something the city brought to you? Was it the school?
We had had some some discussions with the city, but also with the Amazon facility being located in Grimes. We've continued to have ongoing conversations with them as well as the Hy-Vee and wanting more additional transit access. And so it was a way to kind of test demand, but you know, because the bus only goes when there's a trip up there. But if we start to get a lot of trips all going to the same spot, then we'd start to look at some different options. We are also looking at that, the Flex Connect option, which would also touch, touch Clive where we would partner with Uber or Yellow Cab to provide some of those trips. The reason why we haven't moved forward with that one expeditiously is just the lack of dependability of Uber here locally. It's just hit or miss whether you're going to get somebody to to give you a trip and then if they actually fulfill it. A lot of them are canceled at the last minute. And so the seventy-four, which, you know, one of our our key destinations on that is Hickman and a hundredth. And they're all work trips. And you know, we don't want to make somebody not be able to get to work because we're not dependable. And so until that kind of writes itself as we, hopefully, as we come out of the pandemic, then that would be one that we would have on the top of our list to implement. And those are things that we can continue to look at the boundaries and whether we have them right as it relates to each one of our member communities.
And I thought she was going to say not Hy-Vee or Amazon there. I thought she was going to say, because there's a new recycling facility out there.
A new MRF, yeah.
Well, if that recycling center wants to become an unlimited access member, then we'd be, we'd be happy to to look at that.
Elizabeth, thanks for presentation. I really liked the out of the box thinking and and all the new ideas right here, especially incorporating technology and private industry into providing more efficient services. I also certainly liked the reduction in the Clive funding formula as well. So that's always appreciated right there. My question was on the seven electric buses right there. You plan to explain, expand that fleet right there? What's, what's the plan, the long term plan for self sustainable or 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 that type of alternate energy?
Well, we've had them now in service about, I guess it's been ten months. We put them into service right after the the beginning of, at the beginning of the year. I think we're still trying to understand kind of the capacity that they have and kind of what constraints they present our operations. You know, they, when they, they are out in service, we are seeing what we anticipated from a number, range and mileage standpoint. They dip really, the weather really impacts them. So if it's not a seventy, you know, fifty to seventy degree day, then you know, we see that a sharp decline in mileage. And so, you know, I think those are things that we're we're learning. You know, electric and hydrogen are the kind of two propulsion systems that we're seeing a lot of interest in in the industry. And so, you know, wanted to be on the forward part of that from the electric standpoint. But I think we're still continuing to explore where where that is going to be long term and which which option's going to, going to provide us the 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 most for our investment. Hydrogen, you don't see as much variability from a weather standpoint and the cold, but it comes with a much different infrastructure requirement. And also, you know, are you making your hydrogen or you having it piped in? And those, you know, have a much different cost factor. So, you know, I think, you know, I don't know exactly if there's going to end up being one, one solution as we look to the future. But we're definitely wanting to explore and and test the electric. And we have a great partner in Mid American Energy, but still keeping our eyes open for what other propulsion systems might be available as we look to the future that might provide more benefit.
It'll be interesting to hear maybe next year, you what the analysis is based upon the evaluations, given it a couple of years into that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Elizabeth, I think you're spot on with the technologies. By 2030, it'll be one of the two or both of those.
Yeah.
More than likely, so.
And it may.
Good to see you on the forefront of that.
Yeah, and it may depend on where you are in the country and your weather is to what technology is prominent to, so.
Yeah. Ted, do you have anything?
I do. Yeah, so I guess one comment and then a couple of questions. So Elizabeth, first of all, I just wanted to say that, you know, I I've always been someone who said that, you know, if we want to be a big boy metro like we claim to be, we have to have public transit, right? It's so important and we, as a community in Clive, need to support that. So I I appreciate what you're doing. And and I want to say that over the years, I've I've seen that you've adapted the the organization and it's evolved quite a bit under your leadership. And so I I really do appreciate your leadership that you've provided to the organization. I mean, things like the the private partnerships for the bus stops, you know, Uber, you know, the the fact that you've listened to us on the rightsizing concern. I'm not, I'm not saying we're there, but but certainly I think we're making improvements there. So so I I just wanted to say publicly how much I really appreciate your leadership and and what you've been doing. With DART. So, you know, two questions. One, I I brought it up in the past and, you know, I I think it's, you know, we mentioned some of the long term things. And I I really feel like there's an untapped market in the western suburbs with respect to shuttles for big events, you know, whether it's the World Food Festival or the State Fair, eighty thirty-five music festival, you know, even Cubs games or, you know, when we have the NCAA tournament or or whatever, where if it was properly advertised and there were shuttles offered, that would be, I I think, again, I mean, right now, everyone's kind of entrenched in this mindset of that I just have to drive downtown, right? If I live in Clive. But man, I I can tell you, the idea of parking going down to the World Food Festival, which we go to every year, you know, we could, we figure it out, but boy, if I had another option where I could take a shuttle down that was easy and efficient and I knew I would have some flexibility coming back, you know, I think there would be a market there. Have you guys looked at that at all?
We we have explored it for a couple of events and I think there are are some options. They, and I think it will, as we look to the future is the level of service. The the fifty-two is in a quasi local express route that goes between Jordan Creek, Valley West, and then is expressed into downtown. I think it has, you know, depending on, we could look at additional stops or how that works, but it is a a regular service, it's pretty quick connections. It just, the level of service that's on there is probably not super helpful for somebody going to a festival and wanting to have a little bit more regular service. So I think those are things that we could look to explore, particularly with some certain events and trial that and look at expanding the hours. That is some, something that we continue to look at, particularly with that route because it it ends at nine, ten o'clock at Jordan Creek. And we know that people are working, if you work in the restaurant industry or the hotels, you really need something after eleven o'clock. So I think, you know, those are some things that we can continue to look at. But as we're making those decisions, also thinking about the the festival and and how do we broaden the the market for those sorts of routes? I think also with the Route Three that would be expanded with some of the changes with the seventy-two and the micro transit, that that also lends itself. It's a little bit longer trip than the fifty-two, but it is a straight shot into downtown and has a, has a significant amount of service and and span to it that makes it attractive. Do you have anything you want to add on that?
Ted, what was your next question?
Just to follow up on that, I just think it's an untapped market. Like, for example, the State Fair, for example, one of the, the worst part of going down to the State Fair is finding parking, right? And so if if you, if you have that option and you live in the western suburbs, again, it would have to be properly advertised so people know about it. Because right now, everybody's just entrenched in their own, you know, vehicle, that's the only option. So I I don't know, I'm, you know, I mentioned it before, but I just, I really do believe that's an untapped market, but.
And that's something we have talked with the State Fair quite a bit. They haven't wanted to kind of expand their their contribution to 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 DART as we look at potential expansion out west. But that's something we can continue to revisit with them as particularly as parking gets tighter and tighter.
Right. Yeah, the other question was just a real simple one. You know, I I like the Grimes on call thing, but you know, as a Clive resident, I I never would have thought of that as an option for for a Clive person. Is that, I mean, what what's the thinking behind the branding on that? Is that something that could be more broad?
Yep. Yeah, we can definitely look at at how that's, that's how we communicate that.
It's like, it's just for Grimes residents kind of thing.
Yeah, no, it it's for people to get to, get to jobs there as well, given the kind of industry that they've been able to attract over the last couple of years. So we can, we can look at that, good suggestion.
Yeah, I just think it's a branding issue, so.
Well, Elizabeth and Louise, thank you so much for your great work and for your presentation. And I thank you for coming out to see us.
All right.
Is there anything else you need to let us know about?
I don't think so, just appreciate the time and thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
John seconded by Eric, any discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. I pass this five to zero, thank you. Okay, now Richard has a presentation of a new Parks Operations Specialist. Richard.
Thank you. I'm excited tonight to present the first, what will be two new Parks Operations Specialists. We spent the last couple of months advertising. We spent the last couple of months advertising and trying to find a good pool of candidates to fill these two open positions that we had. And we had a great pool, very competitive of almost 70 applicants and did some interviews a couple of weeks ago and narrowed it down to two people that we wanted to hire for the position. So tonight, you had the first, uh, person that we are recommending to be the new Parks Operations Specialist. Caleb Brunkel comes to us from the city of Des Moines. He's been a seven-month park technician there for the last few years and has a ton of experience working in areas from natural resources to working with ornamental flowers, to working with, um, some of the equipment as well as, um, just the general park maintenance that we do a lot of. So we're very, very excited to have him on board. Uh, he will be starting on November 8th and, um, just really excited to get this position filled ahead of the, the winter. So we're gonna be, uh, full staff again and really excited to see what he can do for us here in Clive. With that, I'd ask him to come up and maybe ask questions or introduce himself.
Caleb, come on up. Welcome aboard.
I'm Caleb Brunkel. Um, I was born and raised in Des Moines, Iowa. Um, I went to Iowa State University, graduated in 2019 with a Bachelor of Science in Forestry. Um, I worked for the Iowa DNR for about six years out of Walnut Woods State Park, doing park maintenance and anything natural resource out there. Um, then worked for the city of Des Moines and Parks and Rec Department for three years. So now I'm, I'm excited and glad to be here and working for the city of Clive and work with all of you.
Well, great to have you. You've come to the pinnacle spot now.
Yeah.
Council members, questions or comments?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I have a pinnacle spot in a technical university. So bam.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm excited to hear about your background and the reference to working with ornamental.
Yep.
So what can you tell us about that?
So with ornamentals, I've done a little ornamental with the, working for the Iowa DNR. Um, it was basically just one little bed. Um, I have more experience with perennials. But working for the city, this, this year I decided for two years, I worked at Gray's Lake, doing a lot of park maintenance out there. And then this year I decided to join ornamentals, which I worked down the northwest side of Des Moines. Probably planted around 30 to 40,000 flowers for the, in the summer, around 10,000 in the, in the spring and just put out a lot, about 500 mums this fall. Um, so I have a pretty good grasp on planning and I did the plan orders for, for the northwest as well for all 15 parks there.
That's exciting to add to the knowledge base on that.
Richard, we'll look forward to plenty of flowers in our future. Welcome aboard.
Well, thank you.
Okay. All right, good. It was great to get new team members. All right, we're gonna move to action items. And the first one is a 2021 C General Obligation Urban Renewal Bond. And Matthew, I'm asking you to declare, uh, when we posted this publicly?
Notice of the sale on October 18th, 2021, Des Moines Register.
Okay, Matthew Joyce, you're gonna walk us through it.
Well, we had a, a great sale today. Um, and since we have Suzanne with us, I won't delay. I'll let her share all the good news with you. But we had a great day.
Passing around the bid tab. I forgot there's construction on 235, so I didn't arrive on time. My apologies. Yeah, so this is, um, our C Series this year, um, to take advantage of increment available, with the, the new development here in the corridor for street improvements. Um, first order of business, Moody's did affirm the city's AAA rating. So congratulations on the affirmation of the AAA rating. Um, that always means that we're gonna have a good day in the market because your AAA rating is highly sought after. And we received nine bids. We received nine bids today. And as a reminder, our goal with competitive sale is to get three bids. So that's a good day in the market. Nine bids today from over 46 different firms because we have bidders that have pretty large selling syndicates today. Um, the true interest cost range from 1.89% to 208. So pretty tight, um, overall from the first place to the last place bid. And we have a winner and a second place bid today, that cover bid we call, uh, three 10,000ths of a basis point. 1.89, um, six to 1.899. So we had a very disappointed second place bidder today that, um, anyway, great results. Morgan Stanley was the winner today, um, out of New York, New York with nine-member selling syndicate. Um, the cover bid was from Robert W. Baird and Associates with their large 30-member selling syndicate out of Wisconsin. And, um, yeah, I don't know. I'm, it was a great day in the market, um, excellent pricing. And yeah. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Suzanne, great news. Great to see the nine bidders. And yeah.
Yeah.
Looks tremendous. Uh, council questions for Suzanne.
Fantastic.
All right.
Move the resolution.
Okay.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Uh, further discussion? Seeing now with the council, please vote. That's just five to zero. Suzanne and Joyce, thank you both very much.
Congratulations on another successful sale and I'll see everybody back in January.
Appreciate all your help. Thank you. Okay, great progress there. Okay, action item number two is a resolution approving the pre-design agreement for the I-3580 Hickman Road Interchange Corridor Planning with the Iowa DOT. And Jeff?
Mayor Council, good evening. Uh, opportunity presented itself here. The Iowa DOT is moving forward with the reconstruction of the I-3580 and Hickman Interchange. Uh, while they will do a fine job of brick and mortar design and the engineering gray, great structural strength, uh, is probably not gonna be the prettiest thing. So we have an opportunity here to work with, uh, the DOT in Urbandale to, um, look into some potential improvements along this corridor as we go along. Uh, we met with Urbandale and talked about some of the options, uh, as looking at the land use analysis, what's being used along there, access management. We talked to the DOT. They're willing to reconsider and look at that if we can, uh, identify some improvements along that area. Identifying and including pedestrian and bicycle accommodations through there is very important. The stormwater management, of course, is, is, you know, fundamental to, to us anyway and absolute something we need to get incorporated in there and make sure it's done right. Along with aesthetics and gateway landscaping visioning, let's make this a great entrance into our communities along with, uh, Urbandale. And then looking at funding strategies and coordinating all this, uh, was included in this, uh, planning study. The DOT is contracting with Snyder and Associates for this work. Our agreement with the DOT is to reimburse them along with Urbandale. And, and we sat down with Urbandale and talked about some of these things. They, of course, did not have as much interest in everything that we did, um, but we felt it was still necessary. There's a couple of items we did take out of here as we were going through the negotiations, uh, that, that we felt wasn't as important uh, in hindsight as we got moving forward. Uh, and this is what we came up with, uh, as far as moving forward for the planning study. So with that, I'll open up questions or address anything else.
Council questions for Jeff.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Susan. Any discussion? Anything on your end?
No, I'm good.
Seeing now with the council, please vote. Item passes five to zero. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, the action item number three is a resolution authorizing the approval of professional services agreement with RDG for design and bidding of the Shadow Creek Greenway, $49,500. And Richard, take us through it.
All right, thank you. Um, prior to my start at the city in 2019, the city engaged RDG for conceptual design services for three future parks in the northwest part of the city. Those three parks, uh, are the Future Alice's Road Park on the north side of Little Walnut Creek on the west of Alice's Road. The second is the Shadow Creek Greenway property, um, between two new developments, uh, near the intersection of Baxter and Westgate. And the third property, um, is the Schuler Pond west of Schuler Elementary, just south of Douglas. Since that time, um, the development has, uh, nearly completed near this Shadow Creek Greenway property. In talking to the community development and Doug, um, they believe that they are gonna be wrapped up their commitments on this property by the end of the year with the town home development just to the south. That means we'll have full control of that property by early 2022. So now is the time to get moving with, uh, the development of that property into a park. So, um, we're recommending, uh, continuing services with RDG to take those conceptual plans to final plans, site plan approval, and ultimately bidding so that we can be under construction out here in early 2022 with the hope to be wrapped up by the end of the year or early 2023, depending on weather and contractors and a lot of other factors. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Move the resolution. Second.
Uh, moved by John, seconded by Michael. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from this.
Thank you. Ted, anything on your end?
No, I'm good.
Eric, go ahead.
Don't ask. I know there's been some questions on that developer right there with some stormwater management issues, some other things. Do we have any leverage, Richard, before we take over that, to get some of those punch items done with them?
Yeah, so, um, what I've done is left that in, in Doug's hands. So they're working as a, the developer wants to close out. They either have to get to the point where they do the, the, the site work and the stormwater work based on the approved plans by council. Or, um, Doug has potentially been talking to them about negotiating a, a payment to, uh, give over to the city and allow us to, to do all that work as part of the park development. Um, as of a few days ago, I don't think they've come to a resolution yet, but either way, we'll be able to, to come to something that works for the city as well as the developer.
Thank you.
Will be good to see that tighten up out there and get that done.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
The, the area is really starting to develop well.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a great little park between those townhomes and the new, the homes to the north. So we're looking forward to it.
Seeing no further questions with the council, please vote. Uh, and that passes, uh, uh, four in favor with one extension. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move to discussion items now. Uh, one of our favorite topics, street maintenance and reconstruction. There's always a plus in discussion item, a high priority of this council. So Jeff, looking forward to what you have to share with us tonight.
Well, thank you. I want to start off with saying I was very glad to see approval of the agenda without deletion of this item. An item with 65 slides in the presentation is quite daunting. And while it was mentioned to me to start the meeting that I might be able to do this in 10 minutes, I won't quite make 10 minutes, but I am going to proceed with the assumption that you've all had the chance to look at the slides. You, you know, the data, as I go over it fairly quickly, if there's questions, please stop and let's talk about it at the time that we're going over it. And, uh, we'll get through this, uh, maybe not 10 minutes, but hopefully not too much.
It wasn't me, by the way, who suggested 10 minutes. Just saying. In a friendly manner.
I think he meant it. I just.
What'd you say? Is mayor five?
No. Between five and eight.
Ups and downs. Get no point, all right? Yeah, well, we'll see. We'll see where it goes. I think I can kind of point some things out here. All right, as you talk, the first thing I want to talk about is some of our maintenance activities. Uh, go, go through and we'll cover them real quick. You know, they're listed here and things that we do. Uh, full-depth patching is something that we do. And, uh, the important thing to mention about that is we used to do about 2,500 square yards a year in-house. When we started doing some of the stormwater things, you'll remember we put some of that into the contract. We're still doing 1,000 in-house, but a 1,500 is now in the contract. So, uh, we have shopped some of that out in order to, you know, keep up with some of the in-house stormwater items. Crack sealing is probably one of the most important things we do. Uh, crack sealing is what we do to keep the water from getting under the street. Now, it is as critical as we can get in preserving our streets and maintaining them. Our goal is to seal the streets, one-third of them every year. So every three years, we're hitting every street out there. Some are going back, especially in overlay areas and hitting them more often. Uh, but, but this is one of the activities that, uh, I think we excel at. When we look at communities around us, uh, if you go into Google Maps, uh, you can definitely see we crack seal our streets and a lot of times the neighbors don't. Uh, Mastik application is, is a process that we started here a few years ago in areas where the cracks are a little wider. Uh, the, the crack sealing doesn't hold up. Mastik allows us to band that a little bit better and does a great job of holding up in the larger cracks. Uh, it's a piece of equipment that we rent. We just do it for about two weeks a year. We'll probably, if we can find time, increase that a little bit. Uh, but we're getting great results with the Mastik that's out there. Potholes, well, you, you know all about potholes and, and you can see the number of hours we spend annually. You can probably guess which year that was, the, the really high number. It made Pete famous that year, I think, here in the city. So, uh, i- it's an activity that varies greatly from year to year, but, but it is one, an important activity in us trying to keep up. Uh, one that as we proceed with our street maintenance and we start getting further ahead, hopefully there'll be less potholes down the road. Partial depth asphalt patching, uh, we did a couple of test runs of that. Uh, it's where you take out what's loose on top. You don't necessarily saw it all the way out. You get all the loose stuff out. You go down to solid concrete. You put some binder down and then you put asphalt in. Uh, we're gonna monitor it and see how it holds up. It takes a lot longer. But if it holds up a lot better than the potholes, it's going to have some applications for us here in the city. Curb repairs, um, invariably every winter, we hit a curb or two with our snowplows. Uh, we've gotta go back and fix them. We've gotta make some improvements out there. Uh, and in other places, they just get broke. Uh, so we, we do that. I think one of the things we've mentioned here and changed is typically we did that every September. Uh, we're now stretching that out and then doing it throughout the year as we work around the city. So some of them aren't getting done all first thing in the spring, but we are working them in throughout the year to address those. Mud jacking is an activity where we try to fill some of the voids under the street, raise some areas where it's settled. Uh, we do about $35 annually and we just finished up with the contract this year. It's typically done in this time of year in the fall. Street sweeping is an activity, uh, that is governed for us by our MS4 permit. Uh, basically, we have an agreement with that permit that says we will sweep all the streets in the city twice a year. We meet that requirement. We do a little bit more in that too, uh, as needed. Uh, we get calls occasionally that a street needs some attention. We'll go out and address that. We just don't do it twice. And in the fall, sometimes we do some of the streets more as we try to fight the leaves. Sometimes they come down all at once and it's easy to pick up, but sometimes they take a little bit longer. So we go back and get those areas. We're fortunate and, and I don't know who decided to negotiate all the MS4 permits, but, uh, Des Moines has 24 times a year in their permit. So that's why you see them out sweeping every day, year round. Uh, we're fortunate to have to. It doesn't mean we can't do more, but it, it means we don't have to do more and we got more time for other activities. So. And then snow removal, uh, typically one of our, I think, better activities as far as where we receive high praise. I think we do a great job of it and, uh, hopefully there's not a lot to talk about there. That kind of sums up our maintenance activities. Uh, before I do move forward, if there's any questions or comments about those.
Quick comment on the street sweeping. I've mentioned this before and, um, w- with the challenges that we have, a lot of times it's, it's just a messy looking area, uh, you know, that needs attention. But if it was clean and swept, it would look 50% better than it, than it otherwise does. So I'm gonna encourage us to, to continue to think along those lines as, as we look at problem areas, whether it's on Pinnacle Point Drive or, or, or even with the new Mastik you laid down on 156th Street, there's a lot of stuff there. So it makes it look a lot messier and it's great. We just need to have that stuff swept. And so I know we're trying to, if we're trying to hit this two times a year, which is fantastic. I didn't know that.
We do in the spring, coming out of the winter.
Some of these, these spot needs are, I think, gonna be really, really critical in areas that we're doing work in to make sure that everything's out of there.
And we do that quite regularly. I mean, we get calls occasionally. Uh, we clean up after our contractors. They do a okay job. We can do a better job with our unit. And so we do, we do respond when, when requested.
Thank you.
You bet. The other thing was our street study. Uh, a few years ago, we did a street study. We looked at all our streets. We prioritized. And there was basically three outcomes from that study. One was new street specifications. The other was thinking, setting a goal for our PCI index. And then the other was funding. Uh, a- as we look at it, the pavement, basically the pavement spec that we created went from about a 30 to 35-year pavement to a 50. That doesn't mean at the end of 35 or at the end of 50, it's done. It just means that's needing some major maintenance to keep it and we can extend it. It was a huge benefit for us to, to get that done. Uh, it's going to benefit us long into the future, I think, as we see these streets wear better. The other with PCI goal, and we kind of did two rounds of it. Uh, we set it, uh, when the study was done. And in the interim, they were changing the PCI data from a, a highway PCI to a city. So we set a 65, 60 and 50. And then we changed it to 75, 70 and 65, which is where we're at. 75 for the materials, a little higher speed. Keep them, you know, a little bit better condition. Collectors a little bit lower speed and then residential's, uh, we can get by with a little bit lower PCI there. And then the other was increased funding. Uh, when we looked at that, we were spending about $1.5 million a year on street maintenance and street rehab. Uh, a- as far as the study itself came out, uh, we increased that to 3.1 million. Put a little bit more into the maintenance side that, that we're doing in. As far as the study itself came out, we increased that to three point one million, put a little bit more into the maintenance side that that we're doing in-house. And then increased our rehab and reconstruction side. The one thing about it, it was all in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen dollars. You know, we are losing some ground as we go ahead as inflation takes hold. But we are doing a good job of keeping up at the best we can. And with that increased funding, we chose that three million on the slide there. It it it's out there. And the reason we went to that was the difference between three point three million and three point five was smaller than it was between three and two point five is basically what you were getting for each each extra incremental amount of funding. So we we set it based to there. It gave us an average PCI out there, just a little over sixty five for all streets. So that's where we're sat right now.
Jeff, can I real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you you said you made the comment that the neighborhoods could have a lower PCI. What does that mean? I mean, does that mean that the the streets aren't as good a shape? Because if that's the case, then I would argue that maybe it shouldn't be a lower PCI. Or or is it just mean that it can handle more trap? What what does that mean?
If you give me a minute, we're going to we're going to get to the PCI data itself here in a second and and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And can I address that a question about three or four slides down the road?
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, all right. Again, you've got your policies in there. I I don't want to go through in detail. We talked about it, but there's the details on the street study itself and what we came up with. As far as a new policy on our streets, it was a big thing. And here, here Ted, I'm to it now. We can talk a little bit about it. Sorry for the formatting. At one time it looked really nice. It got slid somewhere. I apologize for that. But you see what's included in the PCI formula. The first part is RII, which is International Roughness Index. It's basically the smoothness of the street as it goes as they drive on it. Then it looks at the number of transverse cracks, the cracks that go across the street, longitudinal cracks, cracks that go up and down. Decracking and spalling, which is some areas that we have some major issues with because of the concrete we have, and then the number of patches. Under the old, it was more for a highway at eighty eighty miles an hour, which is what people drive on them. But I guess it's sixty five is actually or seventy the maximum. Smoothness is critical. You know, at twenty five, that that smoothness, you're not throwing the car up in the air. You're not, you know, it may not ride it like a brand new street, but it's safe, it's functional, and it's just got a little bit of roughness on it at a low speed. So some of that, on the new formula, we took some of that smoothness away. For a city street, it's not as critical that it be, you know, one one inch in or quarter inch in ten feet type of thing, you know, at seventy miles an hour, you get much more of a variation in ten feet. You really feel it throws the car around. At twenty five miles an hour, you don't even notice it other than, you know, it it just sounds a little bit bit different. So what goes into that, Ted, is is the difference in the formula. Not not saying that it's any less safe, it's just saying what is the criteria for being able to drive down that street? You you take one street that's got a little bit of roughness on it. You drive it, like I said, at a lower speed. You don't notice as much as what you do at a higher speed. So so that's where that difference is, is in taking it and saying that, based on your speed, there's certain things that aren't as critical as they are at the higher speeds. You follow that? Or am I making sense or am I confusing?
I guess that makes sense conceptually. I guess I just I don't want to be in a position where, you know, we're saying neighborhood roads aren't as important. And and they're okay to be, you know, and and not great shape. And and we're we just want the, you know, the collector roads and the bigger roads. You know, you know what I'm saying? So.
Yeah, exactly. And.
The PCI really is the is the ride, ride quality of the road.
It's it's a combination of ride quality and condition. And that's one of the things I want to talk about. The PCI data.
But to your point, though, if you have a rougher surface on a road that you're traveling a maximum thirty five miles an hour on, or maybe even forty, you're not going to notice that in the car. But if you're driving seventy on that same surface, you're going to really notice it.
And and that's, yeah.
You'll move the vehicle around and do that kind of thing.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that what you're getting to?
That's exactly what I'm trying to get to. And you thank you for saying it so eloquently. So.
The answer to Ted's question is yes.
Yes.
Right? I mean, the quality of the street is less. It's fifteen percent less than a quality regardless of the ride or seventy miles an hour. We're saying you can have rougher. I mean, if you look at this, I mean, if I just do the math, the cracking can be bigger, the longitudinal cracking can be bigger, the decracking and spalling can be bigger, the patching can be.
It is the number of cracks.
More, you can have more. It can be rougher. It can be worse conditioned roads in residential. That's the simple answer.
Yes.
So it is saying, yes, we're saying the roads can be worse in your residential street than on university. I say that's the easy answer.
Yeah. That's correct. And and so when you're looking at speeds, you know, university is forty five and all of our local residential roads are twenty five. So you're going to feel that road differently. And also quantity of road, right? We have a lot more local roads. And so part of the idea behind that prioritization of that different PCI level is we know our arterial roads and our collector roads in our neighborhoods had take a lot more traffic, right? There's a lot more traffic count on those roads. Whereas our local roads, it's again, very local traffic. So there is, because if we have, if we put the same PCI rating, if we had the same PCI target for all of our streets, we would never get there on the local roads just because you have so many more of them. You'd it'd be, well, I know Jeff's going to get to this in terms of when re reconstructions are triggered, you would have a lot more. But but to to Councilmember McCoy's point, yes, we are prioritizing more roads that have more traffic on it versus roads that have less.
And if you can maintain a PCI level of sixty five, you can still have a rougher road, but still maintain a PCI level of sixty five because of the speed of the vehicle.
I think I'd say it's just because of the roughness. Speed has nothing to do with the PCI. I mean, you're not showing me speed in any.
Speed has nothing.
PCI formula has nothing to do with speed.
What speed has to do with is what you notice on the road when you drive. It has nothing to do with the formula itself.
Factor in the PCI scoring, it just happens to be the reason why you keep a higher PCI or lower PCI. So it's much, it's a much rougher road.
I I won't say much, but it is a little bit rougher. But the other thing that comes into it is cost. You know, if we want to set everything at seventy five, the cost to do that gets involved in that, too.
But you look at ninety ninth street of of Lincoln going up that hill, that thing's got to be like a thirty.
That's less.
Yeah, well, that is.
So 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 we're saying sixty fives are minimum. So so understand that we're not saying that that's an acceptable street by no means. We have it programmed. We have it to fix. You know, we have all those things out there. We'll get a little bit to that, but we do have some backlog on things like that. But yes.
I just don't want to get confused in saying speed is good. Okay, does hide our road conditions.
Road quality is the result of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
That's that's all I'm saying.
Yep, yep. You're right. Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question kind of related to that, too. Do we ever take into consideration where we have heavier bicycle use in addition to the cars? And I bring that up because where I live in Country Club and we kind of push bicycles out onto some of those other streets. And I have heard bicyclists say they're not sure the city is realizing how bad some of those cracks can be for bicycle tires.
I I will say we don't take into account bicycle traffic on most streets. We're not very aware of where those routes are and the on on street bicycle routes. And we do pay attention to that, you know. What we might do in one area where we don't expect it, and it's not to say bicycles never go there because bicycles do use all streets. So I mean, we're trying not to to get any of our streets that bad, but realistically, we've got something we need to get to. I would hate to ride up ninety ninth. I would hate to ride up Summit at one time. It it's a little bit better now. We've made some differences out there. Woodcrest, the same way, you know.
The hill alone on ninety ninth can kill me.
Go down, don't go up. Go down, don't go up. Okay, just go down, all right? So but yes, you know, those are the, we do keep that in our consideration as far as when we respond and what we look at when we go out.
Okay.
So. Some things I want to talk about real quick about PCI data. It's great for trends. You know, one of the things you'll see is a snapshot. When they take it, they drive down the street. One time they drive this way, two years later, they drive the other way. So they're getting opposite sides of the street. Every time there's a car and and they're looking for roughness, they're looking for cracks and they have to drive out around it. It's not an exact science. But it is great for trending over time. You know, when you take look at the number of streets we have, the number of blocks we have, and you look at the trend, it's a great thing for telling us where it is and where we are going over time. So, you know, I get a PCI data and you say the street on that is eleven. It's probably bad. I'm not going to argue with that. But you say it's a fifty. There's fifties out there that I go look at that look in great condition. There's fifties out there that I go look at and say, oh, boy, we need to do some work here. So it's it's not an exact science. We it takes some of us our input and our looking at them also. As far as the PCI, we've updated since we did the study. We've got the twenty nineteen data in there. We do not have anything newer. You know, there's a lot of work that was completed in twenty nineteen and after that's not included in it. If you look at our PCI history, we've dropped just a little bit. In the last couple of years, we dropped one point overall. Again, that that to me is not a big number. It could have went up one. It could have been no better because of that small variance in in the collection of data. Over time, we're going down. You see where we are. Our collectors are dropping a little bit faster than our other streets. Our residential and and arterials are are pretty much the same. Clark Street would have been one of those collectors that we're about to put some data in to to change that. It just hasn't been collected yet. So here's, you've looked at some of the arterial needs, but here's some streets and work we've done since then that's not included in any of the data that we've seen. So it it does lag and we're trying to keep up. One of the things, and I'll come back to this and I'll probably come back to it one more time. If you look at the zero dollar, in other words, we spend zero dollars on this. If you notice between now and about twenty thirty, our PCI is expected to continue to rise. That is due to the number of new streets we're putting on. Every time we put a new street with a brand new PCI, the average pulls up just a little bit, even if the others are deteriorating. So so that's important to notice about what we're looking at here for the next few years. You know, when we start getting the data, we get the twenty two data in or twenty one data in there, I expect to see some kind of bump going up all of a sudden because we're starting to get all those streets in there. I definitely expect it because when we look at some of these streets data, if you look out there in our northwest area, not any of those streets have been included in the PCI data on the south side of the creek or the north side of the creek. So when that data comes in, we should have everything on the south side. A few years later, a couple of years later, we'll get everything on the north side. We're going to get some bumps up in our overall average because of that.
I want to mention, Jeff, too, that those are all under the new spec, too.
Yes, they are under new spec. We expect.
Streets up there.
Yes. So we don't expect to be doing a lot of maintenance out there for for a while. Again, you know, if you look from seventeen to nineteen, you can see some deterioration in there. There's one street, I don't remember where it was, that actually got better, even though we didn't do anything to it. So again, it's in that PCI data. You know, maybe the one direction was better than the other side is is what that means. So you had a chance to look at it. If you have questions, be glad to. But but the key thing in all this was that northwest area, as you saw, none of those streets have been included in any of our current PCI data. You know, the treatment alternatives are reconstruction, major rehab and minor rehab. You know, reconstruction is what we're doing on Clark, includes everything, all the utilities and everything to go with that. When you reconstruct a street, you get a very good PCI. That that's the good thing. Major rehab, that's where we have a a thick overlay, a milling overlay or thin asphalt overlay. You you expect a great PCI result out of that. We do a combination of a major and a minor in our thin overlays. We do some PCC rehab under it to get the life out of the overlay. But then we also put an overlay on top that gives us a great PC, a great PCI number. And it gives us a some longevity out of it. What we do with the minor is we get a lot of streets that we get the big cracks out of Woodcrest Summit out there. They're not quite as dangerous for bikes. They're not quite as dangerous to drive on for cars. They're structurally a little more sound. They're keeping water out. But we didn't do a lot to that PCI number. We have not made a push on that. So that's one of the alternatives. We get many blocks of streets and we do a lot of areas of town that that's going to give it longer life before it gets even lower. But it's also not going as high upon completion.
But you do look at Summit now and you look at Lincoln and you talk to the folks or whatever, it's a night and day difference, right? Even just patching it.
Yes, yes.
Patching it like that. Yeah, you might not bring PCI up, but boy, life is much better for everybody. With your improvements right there. And like you said, Mike, it's a smoother drive. They're just, you know, they're seeing improvements. They're seeing their tax dollars hard at work.
It's not pretty. It's it looks like quilt out there, a little patchwork, but you know, it does make a difference. Talk a few, a little bit about some of these. When you look at deterioration curve, this is kind of tells you how we do. This is based on a twenty five year pavement design. I couldn't find one for a fifty, but it kind of tells you where your maintenance items and where you start looking at things. Again, when we look at those PCI numbers, we don't want them to drop down too low. We'll we'll look at that here in a second. But, you know, tell kind of where we start doing things. One of the first things we do is crack sealing once every three years. We don't wait. We're keeping making sure the moisture is staying out from under there. The reason we do it is, you know, it it drops slowly to start with and then it goes kind of fast. You get a relative low drop in quality with a lot of time versus once it starts falling and you get a lot of drop in a short amount of time. The cost to repair it, if you get it before it falls too far, is a lot less and you get, you know, back up there. Versus if you let it fall too far, you're going to spend a lot more money to get the PCI number back up.
I know I'm doing a lot of questions there, but I want another one.
You bet.
On the on the crack seal and such is how much do we do onto the approach of the drive? So you you look at some of the, oh, my neighborhood and over across the creek and you did some path, you know, you did some overlay into the into the approach, right? And now some of that's chipping away. Now you do come in and seal, but you still have big chunks of blacktop missing in those areas from the approach side to the street because it overlaid onto the approach. When do we fix that? Or do we?
We don't typically. That's where we're at right now on streets.
But you put it in, I just think we should be fixing it if you overlaid on someone's concrete pave, concrete drive. We should be leveling that. It's just pooling. Anyway, we can get on that off topic or off meeting.
I agree. We need to talk through those things.
Yeah.
We we will typically, if we go down a concrete street and there's a concrete driveway with a concrete street, we will seal that that joint between the street and the driveway.
Yeah, but this is blacktop.
Not not the blacktop, but the concrete to concrete.
Like onto my approach.
When we roll, when we go through, you know, what we're doing right now for overlays is basically we don't mill. You know, we don't mill a edge along there, so we have to roll it out so we don't leave it up and just leave a low spot there. You know, the option is we can come in and if you mill and you take two inches out and you put two inches back in, you don't gain a lot structurally either. But but you get a smooth surface against the face of the curb or against the driveway there. It's an option, but but you lose some of that.
It's tough to get it perfect when you're when you're putting that overlay on top of a concrete approach.
Yeah.
Agree. I just just, you know, lots of drives in my neighborhood peeling off.
We can look at maybe, again, it's the private drive and some people aren't around like us, spreading the black stuff up there, trying to seal that joint so it doesn't pop off like that. But it's something we can sure look at is taught and talked about in our operations.
Talk about it.
Again, you know, here here's the concept. You want to get do your cheap maintenance and rehab items and keep bumping that PCI up as long as you can. The crack sealing, you know, put it back up there, keep the moisture from out as long as we can, put those low cost items in there and spread it out. Eventually, you can only crack seal so many times before you do start getting some other deterioration. And that's kind of what this shows as you look at it. You know. Extending pavement life, and that's what we try to do. And and this is where I want you to take a look and talk about, you know, fifty year pavement means it reaches the reconstruction area at the fifty year mark. So where that red line meets, that's where our fifty year is in a fifty year life design. Again, if we do some maintenance before it gets there and do an overlay, it's much more than fifty. If we wait to reconstruction, we've waited too long. But we can get much more than fifty out of a fifty year pavement if we keep up with our crack sealing and and maintenance and other rehabs, keeping overlays and and doing our patching in there so that the street doesn't just fall apart. You know, street work completed since two thousand and eleven kind of shows you, we've been almost all all over the city. There's some new ones out there. We we do a lot of work. You can see where there's some concentration. We have touched in the last few years here, since two thousand and eleven, about thirty percent of our streets that we have been on with maintenance. So that's a pretty impressive.
Crack sealing, that's.
Yeah, that's that's.
Track seal everything.
That's patching, overlays or reconstruction. So again, you you've got the projects and the dollars. You can see what we used to spend and you can see the bump when we get up to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Your dollars are going to work and getting done out there. So talk a little bit about the work just since twenty nineteen, since it started. Big numbers, you know, we're we're glad to have that. It's been important and and it continues to be important. Current PCIP includes reconstruction projects every year from twenty twenty nine. When you look at our overall thing, our overall. When you look at our overall thing, our overall scheme of how we attack the streets, it needs to be a combination of all of them, you need reconstructions, you need your overlays, you need your patching, you need your crack ceiling, all that is important. You know, we could stop reconstructing and just overlay, but those overlay lives are only twenty years. And all of a sudden, it starts catching up with you somewhere down the road, you you get a bunch of them. You know, your reconstructions, when we reconstruct them for a fifty year pavement, we buy ourselves a lot of time out there once we get it done. Reconstruction only handles a few blocks a year, you know, it's not like a overlay that might be, you know, eighteen or twenty blocks a year, or a patching job that we may touch forty, fifty, sixty blocks a year. But but it's important that we do it all and 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 keep and keep all of them going uh for the overall well being of our streets. Again, funding levels, as you look out there. There's a fall, uh twenty forty seven is actually where we start catching up. I- it's a ways out there, the expectation is that after our growth stops. Twenty forty seven is about when all the streets that are currently built are are starting to get addressed. And then we start getting to those fifty year life payments that don't need as much maintenance where we start catching back up, so. Th- this is a very good chart that kind of shows you. Again, I've used it and overused it, but uh, you know, all streets annually, new developments, we get new streets, um, you know. If we want to move the needle, it takes all of them, a- and that's where we're at, uh, you don't move it as much, I can do four blocks or six blocks of reconstruction a year. Six blocks versus all the blocks that are deteriorating, we're losing ground, um, so it takes all of them, as I was talking about there, we need to keep up what we're doing and and keep knocking it out of the park, so.
Hey Jeff.
Yes.
Go back to that graph.
That one?
Yeah, so, I mean, my interpretation of this is if I look at the three and a half or the three million, which we're where we're basically at right now. You know, if I take it all the way out to twenty one, the twenty one seventeen. You know, we're at like somewhere around sixty eight.
Sixty seven, sixty eight, yeah, in that range, yep.
And then, so if I go to three and a half, I get a pretty good bang for my buck. Maybe in the seventy five range, seventy four, whatever that is, and then if I go to four million, I'm up to eighty, right? Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
That's correct, again, those dollars are all based in twenty seventeen dollars, don't include.
I mean, it it kind of.
All that type of stuff, so yes.
But it kind of gives you a pretty good sense for where where our dollars go and where we get where we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. And then if you go above that, then there's not a whole lot of difference by going above that, right?
Correct.
So just looking at this graph. If we really want to get ahead of this, if we can increase from the three that we're at currently to the three and a half or four. We're we're kind of optimizing our dollars, would you agree with that assessment?
There's a lot of factors in optimization, but yes, we're making, we're adding to our ability to address the problems and keep ahead, you know. The three point one in twenty seventeen is about three point five right now, so you know, i- it changes a little bit, I don't know where those numbers would be exactly, but yes, we are doing things to.
I mean, the numbers are going to change, but the general trend line should remain regardless of what that actual number becomes. Out in the outlying years, the general trend of how how the improvement happens based off the investment should remain consistent, is the way I read that.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, okay, just want to make that point, thank you.
You bet. So again. You know, here's what's expected, we we had the projected funding and and actual funding. As you can see. This is just uh patching and overlays, this doesn't include the reconstruction dollars, so.
Ted, you know I can't leave that alone, I tried. But that is at the cost of something, right, and we had this discussion the last CIP round is. To go to three fives, four, four five optimization, you're you're taking from somewhere.
Correct, I agree with that.
Yeah, and so that was that argument of stormwater flood mitigation. You know, police department. You know, fire, whatever, but I get it, it's just it's a.
Well, it's all priorities, right?
Yes.
And I completely agree with that, I guess, you know, Jeff knows where I stand on this and 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 I think Matt does as well. To me, this is this is a top priority. And you know, we need, I believe we need to to do a better job with our roads and 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 improve the funding. And and that means if we need to make some tough choices and look at some other priorities, I'm willing to do that personally. But I just wanted to point out that, you know, where do we need to go to from an optimization standpoint? I'm not saying we automatically need to go to four, but I I think that there that that trend line is a pretty clear indication that. To improve our roads, we need a little bit more funding on this.
Well, I I think the other point too is, and and by this is. Your points are are very good ones, and I think we've all discussed this and bit of this topic quite a bit over the last ten years or so. But if we get behind this eight ball to try to get back out ahead of it. It's really going to cost you, so if it's, so I think the idea is that if you can incrementally. Increase your investments, stay on it, stay ahead of it. Like the one slide, if you let it get too far, then it's really tough to get out of it, it's going to cost you a lot more to do it. That's the that's the other piece of this of this as well, so it's, you know, we we want to stay ahead of it as much as we can.
Yeah, we don't, if we don't get ahead of it, or we, you know, fall behind, we'll be exactly where we are with stormwater. We'll never catch up, right, and so that's just some of the argument of.
Really tough to do.
It's a little much, you know, it's a tough balance, and you're right, we've we've gone mad at every year on all of us agreeing on both sides, but it's it's bouncing.
Well, I have a point related to stormwater too, and as we talk about the total dollar amount. I think we need to be thoughtful of what it is we're buying, are we speeding things up, or are we looking at thicker overlays? And the reason I wanted to mention that is the overlay that happened on one hundred forty second street was in twenty fourteen. And we became aware within the last year or so that that was causing some runoff. Because of the thickness of that and um the curb isn't really there to protect against the the stormwater. So we kind of need to think about what increasing the depth of that.
We wouldn't look at thicker, we we would look at more blocks. You know, the the two inches, again, for just the reason you're pointing out, you know, I mean, you can do a thick overlay, you can put four inches on your streets. But you lose all your stormwater capacity, uh stormwater design in itself, uh storm sewers pipes are designed for five to ten year storms. And then you have capacity in the street that that curb and crown carry a- and to the top of the curb, which usually in a residential area, it means covering the center of the street. On a a collector, it means leaving one lane in the middle and on an arterial, it means means, you know, pretty much keeping it in the gutter line when you look at your design, so.
A question on that, because is it the five or ten?
Year storm.
Storms of the past or of the chaotic times of today uh for those storms? Different today than they were.
Okay, the the five or ten percent, let's not say year, because because that's confusing, but it's the exact same thing, uh, yes. No, and and that's going to get reevaluated, and and constantly looking at those numbers and and, you know, new designs, the ten year storm for a new design will be different than the ten year storm that was done fifteen, twenty years ago. So, you know, and talking about this, you'll see where we're going, uh, the the dollars that are there, we're we're putting them out there. We have the original projects that we laid out. Eighty sixth street railroad crossing is one we're looking at, hundred and twenty eighth and Hickman's coming up, we Meredith, we just cut it done, don't have it striped yet. Clark Street Phase One is is almost done, Harbaugh will seventy eighth to eighty six will be starting next year. Clark Street Phase Two, all all these projects, you can see we're making some progress on some of the original ones, there's a few on here that we haven't addressed yet, but as we go through. You've seen the schedules, I don't want to spend a lot of time going through them, reading them to you, uh, i- if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer or talk about them.
Jeff, ninety ninth court, could you touch on that a little bit, because we all know that, you know, that's a road that's clearly deteriorating quickly. I see that it's scheduled for two thousand and twenty five for a major reconstruction, just to address that a little bit, because it is in bad shape.
Yeah, a- and that's exactly where we're at, there's two things driving that, one is street condition, one is water mains. When they laid that water main, there's a ledge of shale under there, they dug down to the shale and said, we can't dig any deeper and just threw the water main on top of it, which is causing a lot of cracks and a lot of issues out there. So the water main needs replaced, and if we're going to do that, that's the time we'll also do the streets, so it is scheduled for twenty twenty five currently in the in the proposed budget uh for a complete reconstruction.
But to but to that point, I mean, I think that's on a lot of people's radar, there's other streets too, but. I do travel up that street or walk up that street and and. There's it's sinking literally, right, and you've got people's sidewalks sinking, and so hopefully at some point, literally sinking, and so hopefully at some point, we're not. Marking those sidewalks with white chalk saying you have to replace it when we're not even replacing our own street, right? And there's been folks that have pumped those sidewalks of their own, yet our street is four inches deep, you know. So I'm just, I want to be fair to them prior to us saying, fix your sidewalk, we haven't even fixed our own street, and I'm not, you know, not putting it on you, because lots of this stuff happened prior and. Regardless, you know, technology and everything, but there's got to be a balancing act there, I believe we need to go in and pump it and fix it and fix their sidewalk, right? It's an obvious, this happened and this happened because of that. But you can see the pump holes in all their sidewalks.
But I think too, it's what's going to be hard with some of these streets, and ninety ninth is a great example. If we're going to make the um, if if it's gotten to the point, you know, on that curve or to greater the point of reconstruction. To time these all out and to find the the dollars to do these things, it's going to get worse. And it's a communication with the neighborhood of it's going to get worse, but then it's going to be a hundred percent.
We we will keep it safe, we're not going to ignore it by no means, you you know, but but we're not going to go out there and do big patches and do a lot of work to it, knowing we're going to tear it out in three or four more years.
It's a balancing act there.
But maybe we need to. Get it up from twenty twenty five, but anyway, I'm not sure it's safe today. I laid my bag down there, I'm toast. But that's a.
Really, really at the extreme edge of what, you know, I was, you know, two, three.
It it comes down, you know, to the dollar, function of dollars and function of what we can do, uh, we we've got Clark Street Phase Two to finish up priorities. We've got Harbaugh scheduled, uh, two phases of it, uh, we've got a section of Northwest Hundred and Fourteenth that's in front of it here, north of the bridge over to Hundred and Eleventh. That's literally falling apart, we're spending a lot of time there. And then that one, those are the ones that are on there, but there's several streets out there, uh Sunset over there between Ninety Seventh and Ninety Ninth. Colby th- that are just as bad that, you know, we need to put some money into and and we're going to do the the minor patching, we might do a Woodcrest Summit type pageant project. Till we can figure it out, uh, but we don't want to put a lot of money into big spots, knowing it needs all needs tore out and redone, the one thing about uh Ninety Ninth Court. When we redo it, you know, we'll put in the the sub base and and we'll make it so it's not going to do that suddenly anymore, we'll we'll.
Thinking like Hundred and Third Street type of project, Jeff, for Ninety Ninth Court then?
What's that?
Are are you thinking with the reconstruction projects, like what we did on Hundred and Third then, is it just completely rebuilt, and now you want to talk about.
Me like Clark.
That will be the utilities too, and so whenever we're doing the reconstruction, especially east of the interstate. Where we've got the clay clay sewers and a lot of cases and older water main, and the water main is more the driver. We're going in, we're also replacing the utilities, and then we're also rethinking the stormwater too, because anytime we do, you know. Again, complying with our own stormwater ordinance that we apply to all developers. When we reconstructing a street, we have to meet our own compliance needs, hence why you. Are seeing bio swells on Clark Street or the pilot project on Harbaugh, those are reconstructions, and so we have to comply with our own ordinances. And deal with that water quality volume, that that smaller rain event coming off that street. And so those are also significant challenges in these right aways that we have to figure out if we're going to going to meet our own compliance with uh stormwater.
And Clark Street was an extra wide right away, you know, these other ones are going to be narrow and that challenge gets greater as we move into these areas.
More expensive.
And more expensive, you're looking at structures versus swales and and so. You know, and that's, you know, one thing to mention, I guess, is that, you know. Some of these dollars that we're doing on street projects, you know, we're using some of our street dollars to pay for the stormwater management and the storm sewers, you know, that was not included in that original number, but hey, it's all we have available, so we're we're going to do the project, we're going to do what we can to make sure it works.
That's an important thing to to for us to to talk about as we go forward with the CIP is. Utilities in some cases are driving some of these reconstructions, right, the water main has has caused issues on Ninety Ninth Court.
And Harbaugh.
And Harbaugh, uh, where we have water mains that we've had to do a lot of patching work from breaks. We had a place, you know, clay sewer underneath Clark Street. And so one thing that I'm, and this goes way back, you know, when we talked about how do we get to that three point one million. Is there can be some consideration to Councilmember Weaver's point, do you look at? The utilities, because again, they're driving some of these reconstructions, essentially funding the reconstructions. To free up more regular street dollars, but again, that has a that has a consequence of of impacting then the rate structures for water and sewer in particular. And everything that we're talking about on water resources in terms of the stormwater utility. Providing that support, so then those are some things that we can talk about, how we play around with that, we do have. On those reconstructions, the utilities paying for, you know, their share of what it costs to replace the sewer and the water main. And the stormwater management pieces of the reconstructions, but not the storm sewers themselves, so. Those are ways that we can talk around about if if there's. Thoughts in council here that you want to shift that around a little bit, we can work on that.
You know, when you look at the utilities, they are causing some of the issues, if you drive down streets around manholes, you can see where the they're broke up around manholes, that is one thing, so some of that is related to those utilities. You know, we have programmed into our financial plan about a million dollars a year of water and a million dollars a year of sewer to to do that work. We have some water mains uh down there in seventy seventy eighth, the eighty fourth, and there is six inches that are still six inches that we need to get up to eight inch, we have those scheduled. They're going to be eating up most of that million dollars here for the next few years, uh along with supporting some of these reconstruction projects. There will come a time, though, a few years down the road, about twenty five or so, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Where I can't do a million dollars worth of water main, because you have to put the street back on top of it, so that it has to be a combination, but there will be some of those. Dollars available for both water and sewer that could be used to help finance the street portion, a portion of the street, not all of it, but a portion of the street that they contribute to the deterioration on.
Well, we've come a long way, I I think about when we were funding at one point five million, and you know, this council has consistently said. This is one of our top priorities, and we're going to get to it, and 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 that's the deal, you guys figure out how to do it. But this is what the priority is, this is what the funding level is going to be, and 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 you're showing us the progress that's being made, a lot of work to do, this is a tough one. But I think I think this council's made it very clear uh that it is a significant. Top three priority uh for for the city, so um I appreciate that, and uh Jeff, I think great great progress, great information here.
One thing you will see, and I want to, you know, finish up with is uh twenty seventeen, almost four or five years ago, uh, that data was based on, we created a replacement schedule based on it. We went back out this year and reevaluated everything and came up with some new priorities, we use the PCI data to say, okay, let's look at the streets that are the worst. Again, just because it's a forty eight doesn't mean it, it it needs it forty. PCI work on it, let's go look and evaluate, and we came up and and reevaluated everything, reprioritized, you can see how the rankings came out there, we ranked them. One in each district, we threw the worst of each district into a pot and then evaluated them all against each other. And ranked them, and you can see, uh, if you took all five versus the throwing out the high and low, there wasn't a lot of variation, we kind of all agreed on where those streets were and which streets they were. There was one street that, only one, that that really was a big difference, and that was the last one there. Uh, it it went from a difference of thirty third to fifty four, the difference of twenty one, but you know, a- again, that's not a hu- huge for the rest of it being so consistent, less than three or four spots. And overall ranking was pretty impressive, so.
Could you go back one?
One?
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet. Again, we we talked about this, it needs all of it, uh, you know, we need to make sure that we're doing about one point six million dollars every year in patching and overlays, that's what's going to help us move that needle. But we also need the reconstructions, because those are short term fixes, we need the combination of the long term and short term to make sure we're moving that needle. Sixty five, at sixty five, we're done.
That's a heck of a ten minutes, man.
Sorry.
Right there.
That was a long ten minutes.
Great job. Lot to cover, um, and I look forward to, you know, regular conversations on this, these are great updates and there should, it's just a lot there, so appreciate your good work.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick follow up and I guess question for Matt, we do here when we go door to door.
Just a quick follow up and I guess question for Matt. We do hear when we go door to door streets consistently. So we know, as we've already said, we've got a commitment there. Someone on, it happened to be on 99th, had this question, you know, with the loss of the backfill, father earned 29,000, whatever the figure is, are we going to have to raise taxes? How are we going to get our streets fixed? That was the question I got from the resident. So I haven't gotten back to him yet on that. So I didn't know if there was an easy answer to that.
What I will say is your city manager and your staff are developing a budget to figure out a way to absorb the loss of the backfill based taking, using, utilizing our growth. For example, this is going to be a reassessment year. We are going to see a bump from that reassessment. Our phase out of that backfill is we're on the longer scale than some other communities. So seven to eight years of the loss of those dollars. And so at least the direction that I feel that I've gotten from this council is figure out a way to absorb it and within our existing tax levy. And so the budget you will see later at the beginning of next year will reflect that with the first year, first year of the phase out occurring. That's where we're at at this point.
That's a seven year?
I think it's an eight year phase out. It's five and eight. I think it's five and eight. So they extended, at least when they, at least when they got rid of it, they extended the phase out of it. But they put it in that way in the standings appropriation. So the only way that it can be changed is it has to, it actually has to be a new piece of legislation to change it. So it will just continue to go down. And so that's, and that's one of the, if I can infer kind of maybe on that a little bit, Councilmember Edwards is, you know, when we look at the funding level and Jeff had there on that last slide, you know, it'd be really nice if we could get to that 1.4, 1.5 million a year on non-reconstruction rehab. And when you're doing a reconstruction like a Clark and a Harbach and it's millions of dollars, you know, it eats up that 3 million really quickly, right? And so there's alternatives to that, you know, do you look at doing reconstructions every other year so you can have a heavy year of the rehab so that 1.5 averages out? Do you look at the utilities in terms of funding those reconstructions, helping to provide funding for those reconstructions, the actual pavement that sits above the utilities? Those are all things that within the existing, I guess, we'll call it financial framework. But above that, you know, one thing that we've been very careful about with these reconstructions is not bonding for it because you really don't get ahead of anything if you're, you know, doing a 10 year bond issue for something you got to pay for every year, especially when it's rehab. Now, new street construction, like when we get to the point of, that we'll talk about next week, when we start taking on the big behemoth of Alice's Road reconstruction, which is going to be significant dollars. That's one of those, it's more designed for the bonding capacity because it's, you're only going to have to reconstruct Alice's Road once, hopefully, at least in our lifetime, many people's lifetimes, hopefully. And so that is one where it makes sense to bond it for a regular rehab reconstruction program of existing streets. It doesn't make much sense because you're always, then you're losing interest. Your interest is your money isn't going as far. And so it'll be identifying those regular source of funds, you know, local option sales tax, one that is one that we've brought to the table for that, of course, with some recent changes, you know, that that number isn't as high as maybe we thought it might be in terms of the formula change and the populations. And so those are going to be things that we're going to have, we'll all have to talk about if we're not meeting the numbers that the council wants to see in terms of those funding targets. You know, we can present those alternatives and talk through them because they're there. And then there's easier ones and harder ones and all those schemes.
Well, just go ahead, Jeff.
Just quickly, I was negligent, you know, you talked about all the great work, but we got a couple of people, Jim and Brandon back here, engineers that have put a lot of this together and overseen all the construction. And so I do want to recognize them and make sure you realize what they're doing to help get this done too. So.
Great job, guys. But we're saying it.
John, so just quickly, so what I was going to say to him was that, one, we don't intend to raise your property taxes. Two, the city is working on a plan to make sure that we can do that. But then what I thought thirdly was an answer is that what that means is that loss of that half a million dollars is things may be spread out longer, that we won't be able to get to things like some, like you were talking about the example there with streets different. But for cutting that money, we might be able to, might have been able to devote more money to streets.
I think we've got to be careful though, because when Matt describes taking advantage of growth, that's not just new properties being added to Clive. That's a reassessment that valuations have gone up. And so in fairness to people, it doesn't mean that property taxes won't go up. It's because of their valuation potentially.
The levy rate.
We have to talk about what we're responsible for.
I know, but I think we need to explain that we, you know, the levy rate is one thing. We know that that gets applied against valuation and not make it sound like we're, we have nothing to do with that because we do. So it is potentially going to have an impact as we continue to identify priorities. But we're mindful of wanting to be careful about that. I don't think we can say that it just gets absorbed and that they wouldn't see a property tax increase in fairness.
But how, but how, I understand what you're saying, Susan, but how do we have a direct impact on assessments? You said we don't have a hand on?
We don't set the value.
Right.
But we set the budget and the levy rate gets applied against that value to achieve that. And we are not only focused on keeping a levy rate the same. We have to know that that means property taxes go up for an individual whose valuation has gone up and that we are doing that consciously.
But we're not, well, yeah, instead of lowering the levy rate.
Because we set the levy rate.
But so in theory, what you're saying is we should lower the levy rate as assessments go up.
Potentially, yes. That we, it isn't just an automatic. We set our budgets.
Sure.
And the levy rate gets applied appropriately and to achieve that. So it isn't the same as telling someone your property taxes won't go up.
Yeah. Can I say, I agree with Susan on her comments there. I've spoken to plenty of residents who, you know, and I mentioned the fact that we haven't raised the levy rate in six years or whatever the number is. Yeah, but my property taxes are going up. And that's what they care about is they're paying more every year. So and their point is you're getting more money because the value's gone up. You may not have raised taxes, but you as a city are getting more money. And that's what they, that's what they're looking at. So I don't think we can just rely on the fact that we haven't raised the levy rate. Yeah, that's true. And it's a point of pride. But we are getting more revenue because valuations are going up. And so we just have to be mindful of that.
Absolutely, we do. And those valuations could go down too. And they have. And so I think that, you know, our levy rate guides, guides our decision making and our principles. And we, we can't control what property values do. We just don't. We build great communities for sure. This is a.
But the revenues are going up. And so what they're saying, what I've heard is, well, your revenues are going up. So, you know, we've got to, we've got to be able to manage that and just not just rely on the fact that we've only had a steady levy rate. Yeah, that's great. That's what we control. But you're getting more money from the, from each individual resident.
No, I understand that. And the only thing I'm saying is that, is that that can go the other way too. And that's all I'm saying. And we don't have responsibility for property values going up or down. That's, those are market based conditions that we don't control. We control our levy rate. Understand, we have to be mindful as we talk to our residents about this because most residents don't understand it. And who gets thrown under the bus? We do every time on this discussion. So yeah, correct. We've got to be mindful on where the revenues come from and who's contributing to what and who has control of what. John, thanks for bringing it up.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Want to put a bow on this conversation?
I would, I would. And I agree with the points made. But when, there is a but. But when we hear from residents complaining about the tax rate and such, what they don't, some of them don't seem to understand is that the majority of that tax is not Clive's. It's other taxing entities. And I think it's incumbent on us to make sure we communicate that as part of that discussion.
Absolutely.
Clive's portion is only a small portion of that. Other taxing entities take the most of it. So.
Look at the backside of your, of your tax.
I have always, yeah, I agree with John. I've always said, why don't you focus a little bit more on schools and the amount they're taking out of the pie rather than what the cities are working with to run an entire city? You know, when you have, what is it, 70?
We're about, we're about a third and schools are usually closer to half of the tax bill.
53%.
Yeah.
That's where I live. So.
And the county is.
Well, I think it's valuable to demonstrate that it's not just automatic pilot, that we aren't just saying this is going to be our levy rate, no matter what, that we know that any levy rate is likely to generate X percent of a property tax increase for your average homeowner. And it's, we need to be honest about that.
And the mayor didn't mean anything by throwing us under the bus with tonight.
Yeah, no pun intended. Okay, great conversation, John. Thank you for that. We're going to move on to reports now. And Pete, we'll.
With you. Thank you, Your Honor. One little footnote to add to the conversation that you all just had. One way that we always evaluate whether or not residents feel like they are getting that value for the taxes that they pay in any given year is through our resident survey system. And we were happy to start talking a little bit more publicly now about the Voice to People Award that we received, Matt received for the city in earlier this fall. We will be back out in the field doing our biannual survey later this spring. So in the coming months, as we talk about community engagement over the next few months, certainly the first two quarters of 2022, the survey is going to be a big part of that and trying to get the very best response that we possibly can. So we have another data point in our trend lines to see how residents feel about things like the taxes that they pay in Clive, the value they receive for those taxes paid and the other services they get in the city. In the near term, I wanted to give everybody an update on where we are with the illicit discharge that we had earlier this week from Home Depot. So I've got some pictures to share with everybody.
One moment. Where are those boys playing in there?
Hold up just a moment.
Who let their kids swim in that?
I know. Remember, I told everybody, don't, don't, don't touch that water. And they didn't. They were good boys that day.
That day.
That day.
Always a caveat.
There's always a caveat. All right. So this was our view of the outfall underneath 100th Street. So that's coming from the pit over by Fairway, goes down the hole. I believe that's the path it took. Where I know this picture was taken though, was right there at 100th. This was a very, very concentrated substance, even though we were only dealing with a handful of quartz that was diluted there before it was even poured down the drain at Home Depot. Even then, with all the other stormwater that it was mixing with, it still comes out looking like this. Next.
Didn't they've done this before? I mean, just, it wasn't so obvious. This time it was red.
No, I can't speak to Home Depot. I can say that it's likely that we've had some incidents along this drainage where people have noticed something, but I can't say if it was an illicit discharge or some iron that was in the water. We've had a number of projects that we've done, improvements to protect sanitary sewer. And now, you know, we have the big improvements going on over in the parks. So there's a lot of stuff that's with the water, along the water in this drainage. Here you can see, this is at Stepping Stones, right to the east of 90, 98, where the bridge used to be, but it's now been replaced with a stepping stones. You can see it's already started to be a little more diluted. This was probably 10 to 12 hours after we first noticed, maybe a little less time than that on the, per day of the incident. And next. Let me hear. A moment. And yeah, here you can see where it pools up a little bit more next to the culvert before it goes underneath 98th. And then you can see, this is the day before the rain started, we're in that very first pool where we're making these improvements in Indian Hills Woods. That's where the vast majority of the contaminated liquid looks like it was held. Here's what it looked like earlier today. Big flush that's coming through, water looks clear, rolling with clear. It also looked the same way on the other side, which is what we should expect. And you could see even today, we had, out of abundance of caution, knowing that we had a lot of water coming, we've got booms that were set up along the drainage. In this case here, along this pool, the water was coming at with the rate that actually knocked the boom out of the way. But if you go all the way down the drainage to the point where it then starts cutting down north and south, there are still, there were this afternoon, still booms there out of just an abundance of caution. This is a requirement of the MS4. This is, the city of Clive is responsible for helping, you know, identify where the illicit discharge discharges come from and then controlling them. And in this case, I'm really proud of the way that our public works team, our parks team, our fire department, working with partners in West Des Moines, all came together, sounded the alarm, traced it back to where we thought everything was coming from, and then got in touch with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. The investigation is led by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. They will then determine appropriate penalties for the illicit discharge. What we're confident of though, is that our expenses and West Des Moines will feel this is the same way, but our expenses are going to be borne by the people who created the pollution when that's finally determined as well. Chief Rowe was very complimentary of a lot of the private companies that came out and worked really fast before the rains came to suck up as much of that water as we could. And it was a lot of water. We had crews that came down that had previously been working up in Webster City area. We had a crew that came over from Omaha that was contracted by Home Depot. We had a couple of smaller operators that we were able to get in touch with as well. So the work got done fast before we had the big rain event. And we feel them pretty strongly right now that we kept any of that material or the vast majority of it from getting down to Walnut Creek.
Great update. Thank you, Pete.
Any other questions?
Great actions by everybody. Questions, council?
Yeah, just speaking personally, I've had water resources on my brain for so long now, worked for the city. When I hear about an incident like this that couldn't be prevented, it just really grinds my gears. This is something that everybody pays a cost for if people don't treat the, these water resources, the precious and very valuable thing that they are. Probably also the result of the fact that this happened just after I was out in the green belt with 100 kids from Indian Hills Junior High, pulling trash out of Walnut Creek as part of a wonderful cleanup project. And the students were, are auditing their, what they collected with help from Metro Waste as well. And we're looking forward to those next steps that we'll take this fall, winter and spring to build a communications toolkit to inspire even more people to build up on their sort of stewardship muscles and get out there and be good stewards of this, of these, of these spaces. But just like with the incident here with the illicit discharge, so often something gets to Walnut Creek after the water has taken it there. It travels from a long ways away just because of the huge power that comes with that water. So a lot of times our attentiveness, our stewardship, our cleanup work can be more powerful if we do it before it even gets to the creek, when we do it out in the neighborhood, when we do it out in our yards and other places in the, in the watershed as well. So I look forward to working with the students to build that toolkit and determine which way they want to take it as they think about how they go out now and inspire other people to care about this the way that all of us do.
Pete, beyond the DNR fines and such, what as a city can we do to try to educate or make sure something like this doesn't happen?
I'm a believer in layers and incremental touches. So one that we are doing right now is the Storm Sewer mural project. We go out and work with kids till they get a chance to learn about it when they're painting it, or the resident does. But when people are walking by, they get the chance to see those as well. Another thing that we're doing, what will be some good storytelling on this front will be tomorrow, when we have our rescheduled bicycle tour, looking at water resources projects and from roughly our easternmost border up to the aquatic. most border up to the Aquatic Center, bringing together a lot of water resources professionals from around the state to just go show them what works here in Clive. All of these types of things, I think, add up. Now, for this particular story, we've got some choices. We can choose to make this a bigger story if we want and start to share some information. We certainly wanted to make sure we shared the information with the neighborhood, because we knew they were going to start seeing it and be worried about it. And it was important we did it, because when that was as concentrated as it was, it could have stained skin, stained fur, even caused some skin irritation, and we didn't want any of that to happen.
Well, I guess the question I have with, you know, the business is not in Clive, but it's in the watershed. It impacts us. And when you're dealing with a Menards or a Home Depot, I don't know if there's some educational process where they ought to review some of the requirements on a regular basis, so an employee doesn't do something like this.
It's a great point. I'm happy to work with our Water Resource Engineer, Rachel, and with Chief Garcia and Chief Rowe, to talk about how we can do some of that specific education follow-up with our partners upstream, in this case, Home Depot, so it doesn't happen again. Home Depot's got a pretty powerful incentive right now to get this right, pretty powerful financial incentive when they see the bill for this.
We'd be happy to paint a mural, one of those murals on all the intakes on the property too, if they want.
Well, if that's what it takes, I mean, I'm frustrated. This is just unexcusable.
Yeah.
Did they just dump it down the drain then, Pete, or did they dump it back? Or do we have a really analysis of what really happened with the incident?
I want to make sure we let the investigators do the investigation, but from what Chief Rowe could see, we got a good look at what the product was. And we also figured out that they were trying to prepare it for some application they had there at the store. They had mixed it with an appropriate amount of warm water. But something then got fouled up, and it could have been that they just made a simple mistake and thought they were putting it down the sanitary sewer, which would have been okay, but instead put it down the storm sewer.
What I did like, though, Pete, is the over-communication and transparency, especially to the neighborhood, right? It, it doesn't make it any less of a, you know, damage or catastrophe or what have you. But when you over-communicate, it does, at least for the city side, take a little bit of that wind out of the anger to us and puts it to where it is, is deserved, right? And so always be over, you know, over-communicating, overly transparent, and usually it'll side with you. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, very much agree.
Couple of other short things in the, to update the council on. We're happy to receive an Iowa great place, another grant from the state of Iowa for the Green Belt Landing Project, which I believe many of you already heard about. We'll have that, if I let the cat out of the bag on that.
Well, they'll hear it tomorrow, but yeah.
There's good news coming tomorrow.
I didn't get the number we were hoping for, but it's a big number we were hoping for, but we got a number.
Right. One that I.
That's over-communication.
That's over-communication. Today, today, we also got the formal announcement from ISWEP that we received an innovation award for the annually, their annual innovation award for the stormwater wetland at roughly Alice's Road and Berkshire, no, no, excuse Alice's Road and Meredith, where the trail currently kind of dead ends as it goes underneath the road there. So that beautiful wetland that our, our Water Resource Engineer, Rachel Conrad, designed was recognized. We were happy about that. Our Harbach, Harbach Neighborhood Meeting, which happened earlier this month, was not a huge group, but an engaged group. A lot of folks who live right on the construction corridor and others who live out in the neighborhood. One of my favorite takeaways from the meeting was when we talked about, would they be interested in a cost share program to do soil quality restoration in their yard to plant some trees? We had universal head shakes yes. So now our challenge, because I think we're offering a really attractive opportunity for residents and businesses in that space, our challenge will be to go out and engage with them individually, layer on the engagement, get the numbers that we need so that we can meet our stormwater requirements. But the early indicator from that group makes me confident that we're going to have a receptive audience. Finally, the Clark Street Bio Cells. Our engagement continues with folks who are interested or have concerns about those cells. If you are hearing from folks specifically as you're out engaging, please don't hesitate to send them our way. You can absolutely tell them that I am happy to sit down with them individually. We've already done that with a number of residents. We'll keep doing that, though, because our goal here is for them to have good understanding and also start us on that path of earning their trust on this part, on this project. One small thing we're going to do in that effort is ahead of beggars night, so nobody could, it's pretty dark out there right now without the streetlights. The, our crews are going to be going out and just using some wood lath to put it up around the bio cells that are under construction and put some tape up. So no little kid ends up running off a driveway there and finds out, oh, gosh, there's a hole here now that I done, didn't remember. It's not something where we're really overly concerned that folks are going to take a bad step or have a bad night. But this is just one more way that we can show them that we appreciate that this is a change, and we want to work with them to build up their trust and, and get a great, great piece of infrastructure in the long term.
Any updates on the streetlights, Pete? I know that is a concern with the neighborhood.
Jim, do you have any updates right now on that?
Come up to the mic for Ted can hear you.
Same message that we had before. They, they do have crews available. They're waiting for some of that work to finish up, but we should have that done by the end of the year, end of the calendar year.
Yeah. So this has been one of those where the, we're hearing that pretty consistently. The neighborhood would like to have those lights back out there. So being able to deliver that here as part of construction season this year is, will be valuable.
I would say on that Harbach, though, what I've heard, there's frustration. They're appreciative of the work. They're not fans of the bioswells, nor am I.
Harbach or Clark?
Clark, I'm sorry. I get their point. And so I think it's a learning opportunity for us to listen and maybe make some changes in the future. But they're also, kudos to Jim, and who he works directly, you know, with his staff, but Jim has been mentioned multiple times of reacting and proactive and, and listening and answering to the residents on their concerns of construction and construction equipment and, you know, sidewalks and all that. I mean, I've heard that over and over and over again. So it needs to be shared directly with you. And it's appreciative by me. I appreciate it. And I know the rest do too, but good work out there, even though it's a frustrating project for everybody.
Jim, thank you. And Pete, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Great information. Ted, we're going to move to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what, what Mike said about the communication for the Paints Bow to the neighborhood. I, I thought it's been very good and just really well done in what was sent out. But outside that, I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you, Ted. Eric?
Nothing tonight. I just think we need to continue to take the, the communication levels, continue that with Clark Street too. We can't over-communicate enough to Clark Street guys, as you well know. Folks are concerned. They just want to know where we stand at the project.
Chad?
Just to follow up on the Harbach, we did have some residents indicate an interest in rain barrels as well as an option. So just wanted to throw that out. And good news, the MRF, Materials Recovery Facility in Grimes is, has been in test mode and will open full, full bore on Monday. I think they had about forty bales of recycled materials just wrapped up. And I don't know if Michael would want to expand on that, but it's very encouraging, very exciting to see that open up. You're, yeah, we're going to have an opening on the seventeenth, a grand, kind of a ribbon-cutting grand opening. You'll all be invited. But yeah, this week has been a trying week and a, it's high-tech as it is. We've had two international consultants come in to want to see it and have mentioned you all built the most state-of-the-art facility and probably the best facility in the world today. They said you'll be, probably be beat by next summer, because there's a couple of being under construction, but today you have the best facility there is. And you'll all be proud of it, of what we've done both inside, admin side and also on the manufacturing side of a hundred thousand square foot building. But bales were running today. It was all hands on deck, and I learned how to sort today at a, you know, twenty-five tons in an hour. It's a fast speed. So I, I, as you can imagine, my attention span was, is just as short. But I stayed there as long as I could for an hour or two, and we bailed. So.
Cool day in the office.
That's right. Good news for everybody. It's, it's firing up Monday. All your materials starting Monday from Clive will be coming there.
Look forward to seeing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to thank our, our candidates for council and mayor for being at the, participating in the, the forum last Tuesday night. I think it was well-attended. It could always be better attended, but, but I think it did pretty well. And I think everybody did a great job. So thanks to the chamber for having, hosting that and, and to the candidates for participating and, and making it what it was. So.
Well, the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority met last week. Rachel Conrad did a great presentation. So Clive continues to shine. They brought forward recommendations for funding for Jonathan Swanson through Pope County, and they said they had already approached most of the cities. But I could see that there wasn't any attention really paid to population changes, because some areas have really grown pretty substantially. So they agreed that that had initially been part of the formula in kind of identifying where funds should be allocated. So they were going to go back and take a look at that just to make sure we're keeping that in mind, because it gets said on about a ten-year basis on how we'll apply that moving forward. So that was something to consider. The Bravo Director, Sally, said that they've been reaching out to past investors to give them an opportunity to buy tables. I don't know if that also means that they've reached out to cities yet.
At least I haven't gotten one.
Okay, so that process is underway, and they're, they're increasing the table costs substantially, they've said. I don't know what that will mean for cities, but they expect that there's heavy demand. So we should.
Yeah, I was wondering that when I read that Business Record article, because we hadn't, we hadn't gotten any communication. So.
Uh huh. So anyway, be ready to, to watch for that.
And I, I would assume, you know, typical, the council would be interested in a table again for, as we are usually every year.
I think Susan's saying, get ready to pony up.
I don't know if that's going to impact the.
We will provide, we will provide that information compared to previous.
And then the other thing, they just kind of remain interested in how communities are planning to allocate some of the COVID dollars and ask that we just let her know if we need a presentation.
Yeah, the, the challenge that, I think the, the lingering question is whether or not those revenues are the ARP dollars, and we'll talk about it more next week at the CIP in terms of at least what staff is proposing to you all for the use of our funds, when we didn't have an overall revenue shortfall that we cannot use it for revenue replacement. And so that would be the only way that we would, we could give dollars to Bravo or CBB. And so that was a big, big discussion point in that meeting with all the cities is, I don't think it's, they're even eligible for our funds. And I know Des Moines was going to do some research on that, and I haven't heard back from Scott Sanders there in terms of the, you know, because we still haven't seen the final, final treasury guidelines on it, whether or not they're even eligible from funds from us. Now, Des Moines obviously had a revenue hit, particularly in their utilities and other areas that they can show. But I think overall, they still ended up okay as a city. And so there's that kind of question mark that's still hanging out there that, I know there's a lot of cities that are kind of of my opinion of, I don't think they're eligible for our dollars anyway at this, at this time, based on the current language.
But we'll have to research it.
Right.
Take the curbations.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to mention is I'm hearing from a couple of projects, including Airport Terminal. And I know there's a plan for them to come talk to us, but it seems that both the state and county are encouraging some larger projects to go talk to cities as they're making promises they want to see match coming from the cities too. So I'm just hearing that as more of a trend.
Yeah. And to the airport terminal, I know I shared some kind of initial information last week with you all. I'm going to have more for you in terms of some documentation that the airport director gave to us at a, we had a metro manager's lunch for that. The pitch was coming. We knew it was coming. I think there's a desire, I think there's a plan there, depending on, again, the infrastructure bill at the federal level, and then, and then potentially the state throwing in as well into that pot. But I think there's going to be an expectation from the state to see the locals. I, I don't know if the dollar amount matters as much as everybody participating in some form or fashion in helping fill that hole, two hundred and fifty million dollars to, to get the terminal moving forward. Don't know what that number is today. I know that there's proposals being worked on. They would be capital-type proposals, how the counties would participate, how the cities would participate. What I would, what I would offer, at least from my perspective, it's, it's probably the most important economic development project for this metro, to see that get done. I know the mayor and I have done a number of corporate business visits in our own community where one of the first things out of the CEO's mouth is, when are you going to get a better airport, you know, for business travel? And that goes back a number of years where we've had that comment. We've heard that comment. So I think that that's going to be a critical metro regional discussion to have. And I think there's going to be, probably after the first of the year, I think you'll see the airport likely doing kind of the road show. And, but I think they're working on what that proposal looks like, and they don't know yet until there is some infrastructure funding that's passed. But, and it could move up the timeframe of terminals, because some of these dollars, you know, have to be spent by 2026. So it would be some pressure on them as well to maybe move the terminal up a year or two from their current plan. So, but again, I'll have some more information. One thing that you'll be curious to know, you'll see in the data that I'll show you tomorrow, is they gave us a report of people who fly out of, or fly out of Des Moines, you know, where do they come from in terms of zip code? Clive is number six on that list. So in terms of the number of people in Des Moines, West Des Moines is two zip codes or one and two. Urban Dale, one of Urban Dale's is three, Johnston four, Ankeny five, Wer six, Waukees seven. It's about ten, eleven, twelve before you get to a Des Moines one. So it's just kind of an, I never, I've never seen that information before. So it was kind of fascinating to see kind of what, where the predominant, you know, travelers come from in the.
This pre-COVID numbers?
Yes, I believe it was. I believe it was 2019 data, but I'll, I'll have the report for you next, tomorrow. So.
Say it's nine, ten, or eleven, or whatever the number is until you get to Des Moines. Is that all of the zip codes of Des Moines, or is that just like each individual zip code of Des Moines?
It's one at a time. Yeah, it's one, it's individual zip codes. So obviously, Des Moines has a lot of zip codes.
But none of them hit till nine.
None of them hit till like, I think, nine or 10. Ames is in there, which would probably, you know, at like, I think 11. One of Ames' zip codes, so.
If you combine all the Des Moines zip codes, it, it would rank a little differently, presumably.
And the, yeah, and they don't break, and zip codes don't match population perfectly either.
Well, I'll be attending a reception there on Monday.
I'm going to try to make it to that, too.
And I'm sure that, sure that there will be discussions.
Oh, yeah.
At that reception. So I'll be happy to update the council as quickly as possible.
Would that be an ongoing funding or this one-time funding? Yeah, because it does big question of this regional approach. I don't want to get too far into this one, but the regional approach of our other facilities and our other things, right? If the, the funding is, is expected out of the cities, it's a very small board as well that runs that. So perhaps some, a little bit more direction from other cities in a pool or whatever. I'm not saying one-to-one, but you know, whether there be, can be representation from municipalities other than, you know, a Des Moines or a, that type of thing in the future would be an interesting discussion.
I think one thing you're going to hear on that is, it is a kind of a one-time ask. And one of the caveats is, and this has come from the state as well, is cities can't ask for regional representation. That, that, and I think, well, I think their argument is, is they've seen how long it's taken us to get that figured out for things like Des Moines Waterworks, even Dart, changing governance, that they, they don't have, we don't have the time. And, and Director Foley was pretty direct to say, if that's. And, and, and Director Foley was pretty direct to say, if that's going to be one of your demands on your funds, I don't want your money because I can't accept it. If that's a caveat. So that, because there is going to be some communities with that request.
Let's get a more full update for the council. I appreciate this as a discussion. Let, let's go ahead and move ahead.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot more to that one.
Yeah, Mike, anything more to add since you've been pretty quiet tonight?
Yeah. I apologize, I've got a sore throat. WRA, just to finish it up, I, I think a few of us know, but it looks like, you know, I had kind of raised the flag on the Grimes and Urbandale deal. It looks like they've come to a settlement on that. When it's finally signed, you know, we'll, we'll let you know, but it sounds hopeful by all sides and no more action. So that'd be great to get Grimes in there fully. I think that is, that's all I have. Harbach reconstruction meeting was, was good. It was not a lot of the people there, but the right people. And there aren't a lot of people in Harbach. But so most, most of them there that live on Harbach were there or close, you know, and voiced their opinions. So it was good.
Thank you.
So just a, a few quick items. Of course, we'll have the work session a week from tonight in here for the proposed capital improvements plan. So that'll be, you'll be seeing that packet, that work session packet on Monday. And also now with tonight, the legislature passing the second plan for redistricting, and that's going to the governor now for signature. That starts our sixty-day clock for reprecincting for our Dallas County precincts. And Matthew and crew, and I'll share kind of the proposed map to you, my weekly update, but that, uh, will be coming forward for setting a public hearing at your next regular meeting to kind of realign our Dallas County precincts, also anticipating future growth. So maybe we won't have to do it again in 2030. We'll see. But what's, one thing that's key to that is we also have the agreement with the city of Waukees for a couple of little cul-de-sacs that sit west of one-hundred-and-forty-second street in Dallas County that kind of don't have a home because they sit by themselves on an island. And they actually go to a Waukees precinct as a part of that. And so we're actually updating that agreement as well. So, so more to come on that, but appreciate Matthew and the team's work and Amanda and community development with putting the maps together. So last thing, and we'll be talking with the personnel committee tomorrow morning about this, is with case numbers trending and down and continuing to trend down and, uh, the announcement this week, that'll be verified next week of children being eligible for vaccination. We'll be likely looking at some, some tweaks to our protocols starting on November first, which will be Monday, in terms of mask requirements in facilities. So more to come on that, but I'll be talking to the personnel committee tomorrow morning about that. That's all I have, Your Honor. If you have any questions.
Matt, thank you. Council questions for Matt? Matt, thank you. Matthew, any other correspondence standing to be aware of?
Everything was in the packet.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, anything for the good of the order? Saying nothing, we're going to adjourn at eight thirty-three.